Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How are you, sir? Okay. First of all, welcome everybody to our board meeting. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
We do not, okay. So, let's move ahead with an approval of the agenda.
Seven.
I'll second the way it is presented.
Okay, on agreement? Aye. Approval of the meeting minutes for May 11th, 2023, regular meeting?
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for May 11th without the attached timeline of events.
Do I have a second?
I will not second it that way. I will make the motion that we approve.
Let that die for lack of a second first. So that, that, you're not going to second it?
No.
So that one, that motion will die for lack of a second. I just don't want two motions on the board at the same time.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
It was meeting minutes we're talking about.
Sorry, sorry, meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
And as far as discussion, then I think it's inappropriate to include a word-for-word recitation of your investigation and timeline of events, given that it wasn't approved by the Board of Supervisors, and meeting minutes are not designed to be a word-for-word recording of any individual, as opposed to a summary of events, and you've stated that a number of times publicly.
Okay, on agreement?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Approval of meeting minutes for June 8th, 2023, regular meeting?
Seven.
I'll second.
On agreement?
Aye.
Approval of Treasury report and bill list for June 2023?
Mr. Chairman, can I just have one thing?
Yes.
So I provided the payroll reconciliation in your materials this evening, as well as the budget to actual. That was just late because I was on vacation and getting it done on time. It was just a little bit of a challenge. But that has all been, that's all there now. In terms of the actual numbers that you've seen on the Treasury report summary list, which is that front page, nothing changed from that.
Hopefully, you had a good vacation.
I was tempted to do some work on it, but I decided against it.
Well, what you came back to. Okay. Do I, I have a motion? I have a second.
Nope.
No. No, I'll make a motion to approve the Treasury report and bill list for June 2023.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
On agreement?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on to the public comment period. For this part of the program. Program. Lady Jones, stand by for the news. Anyway, we're going to start at row one, work our way back. And when you stand up, if you would please, tell us who you are, where you live, and then go ahead with your comment. Row one. Row two. Row three.
Donna Bissinger, 833 Allen Town Pike. The flooding was bad.
Yes.
Anyway, I'm presenting you this because you are an amazing human being. And as soon as I saw it, I had to buy it for you for all your years of service to make the township. Please open it up.
Is that even your birthday?
No, it's not.
She's not running, and she's sitting right behind a police chief.
Should we leave the room when you open that? Okay. That is very nice, thank you.
Oh, now you're welcome. You deserve it. You have been supporting this township for like ever. And, you know, when I heard, no, anyway, when I heard at this meeting, you were a policeman and then a police chief, and then you told me up at Turpville, you also were a fireman and all the other stuff you were, plus 12 years on the board. As soon as I saw that at the Goodwill, I'm like, oh yeah. Because it's got everything on it. And it shows everything about supporting our country and God and a township, and you deserved it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in that room? Okay, go ahead.
My name is James Fox. I have 1214 Chestnut Street.
Yes, sir.
And due to the flooding of the way it came down, it kind of blew out that entire yard and amongst other things. And I'm just trying to find out what we can do to rectify the situation. I've been down here, at least 15 years ago, trying to get used to stop the debris from getting into it.
And I believe we had tried to work with your attorney, and your attorney never got back to us?
No, my attorney did get back to you. Got back to your solicitor. They had meetings, and even your solicitor told my attorney that I would never let my client sign this. He's made it so tough for me to sign. And then I actually made it, he made up a form, and I signed it and gave it back to you, and you said, you rejected it.
Okay, well, because there's so much time in this past, I think.
And if you were the solicitor at the time.
We're going to need to reevaluate and go back and see what transpired because I remember it a little bit different than that. Because what we were understanding was that your attorney and our attorney were back and forth, and then communication ended. Is that correct? Because you were with me sitting there. Yep. Okay, so do you still have the same attorney?
I do.
So why don't you have your attorney reach out to our solicitor?
Just, just why, what's your name again?
James Fox.
And who are you using?
I'm using Lawrenceville, Arianna.
Okay.
And what was your address?
My home address, well, 14 Chestnut Street.
Thank you.
Do you have a card or something?
Yep, I'll walk it up to you in a second.
Okay, anybody else in that room?
Yeah, hi, I'm Terry Myers. I live on Spirit Court along with some of my other residents here on Spirit Court. I'm wondering what your plan is for the next flood that we hopefully won't have, but clearly that's going to go in everybody's mind. So I'd like to give you an opportunity to present what you can present.
Well, this flood that we had was of astronomical proportions, and we have to really take a look at it now because this was the worst that I've ever seen. So we're going to have some time to evaluate. I can't tell you what the next one will bring. I'm hoping not anything near as we dealt with here. We're still working on cleaning up. I'm sure you're aware of that. And I'm not sure what we can do at this point because there's only so much creek to put water in. There's only so much that we can do, we can't stop the water from coming down. So, you know, we're almost at a, you know, a pre-event. If you understand what I'm saying, because.
I don't really understand the pre-event. I don't think that's going to work.
Well, it didn't, you know, but it's not our.
I understand the position you're in. It's very difficult. I'm sure you understand the position that many homeowners are in.
Oh, I do.
It's very difficult. And this is actually the third time we've been through this in five years, less than five years.
Do you have flood insurance?
No, we don't need flood insurance, and when we asked for it, it was more than our mortgage payment.
Right. And what happened was back in 2012, I believe it was, or 14, when Timmy Holden was a congressman, they changed the way we derive how the flood plane is determined in a home. And they moved it in that area from the basement to the first floor. So that eliminated you from having to buy flood insurance all this time. Now, I can tell you that Burke's EMA is looking at this event, Pima is looking at this event, and they've got a, they've got a meeting room set up for, it's today, tomorrow, and Saturday thus far, for people to go and discuss and see what's available or whatever. Now, I'm not sure that the governor has signed a declaration of emergency or not. As of right now, I don't believe he has. I expect or anticipate he will, but anticipation does a lot. You know, I didn't anticipate the storm and look what happened. We know that a lot of water came down. We had damages to our properties as well, personally and municipally. So we're going to be looking at a few items that we already discussed briefly, but it's going to take time to sit down and go over a plan to see how we can, if we can, and what we can do for the future. So I can't promise you anything. I can promise you we're going to look at it.
Can I ask you to maybe explain a few things that you may have explained before and I don't know? Maybe you could refresh some of our memories. From what I understand, two events took place, from what everyone that's lived here 20 years is telling me. That one, we've got a ton more development, but it's all been approved up above us where it starts. Okay, don't know? That was one thing I've been told. The second thing I've been told is that it was probably five years ago or so, when you stopped mowing all of that for a grant that went to the Boy Scouts and became a wildlife area or something, and it was a $60,000 grant. And I can guarantee there's way more than $60,000 damage, five years ago already. So is that something that could be reversed? I mean, the grant's done and over.
And I believe what that was done for was to try to consume some more water? That was the whole idea behind that.
Everyone's told me that it's had the opposite effect. And when we first lived there, it was mowed, and we didn't have this issue. And repeatedly, I mean, no, not just me. I think everyone you're hearing from is saying, it's getting worse, it's getting worse, it's been the worst, it's been the worst. Five years ago, this is the worst I've ever seen, it's never been like this. Two years ago, oh, it's pretty bad. This year, oh, oh, no, this is once in a hundred years. No, this is once in five years, three times in five years.
And I'm right there with you. We saw that.
So what are the next steps for you guys to? I understand you don't have a decision today.
Right.
Who do you take this to?
Well, there's a couple of people we got to go to. We got to go to our state legislators. We can't touch the streams without DEP approvals.
Are they involved in widening the 73 section of the bridge there? You know, making it wider instead of, that's the other thing.
You mean for the waterfall?
Yeah, for the waterfall.
They would have to be, but PennDOT, we don't have control over PennDOT. PennDOT has control over us.
So it's PennDOT and DEP.
PennDOT controls the bridge because it's a state roadway. DEP controls waterways. And what they do is to go into those waterways and make changes to the stream beds. They've got to give them permission to do that. We can't just go in and clean it up.
So how do we go about asking for that permission?
Contact your state legislators.
So if everyone contacts them repeatedly, knocks down their door.
We've sent letters to PennDOT.
That will help.
It's not only, if I may speak. Down at the bridge, I've taken pictures of that. And I don't know if you've been down there, but there's two under, creek underpasses. What, it's, I don't know.
Are you talking about the 73 bridge?
Yeah. 30 feet wide each one. One is completely embanked. Only half of that water can get through now. Will it never flood? But probably not, but we'll keep it out of your basements, hopefully. Josh Meck and Keith, did you meet, were you able to meet with Conservation District or just was in contact with them?
I spoke to them at one of the conferences that we were at.
And they're kind of open the?
Yeah, so PennDOT holds the bridge permit for it, which allows them to clean it. I think it's 50 feet either side, which is the same as we hold for like West Walnut Tree and all that. So PennDOT is responsible for the maintenance of that bridge. That's the problem. And they have been notified, the Conservation District is the gentleman that I spoke to at the conference. But PennDOT has been submitted or emailed and made aware of. In fact, I think I brought up on the phone when we spoke to him about the water issues of West Walnut Tree. So where it goes from there.
We offered to clean it up.
Yeah.
Yes. Let us do it, pay us to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I said that, I said, I can get homeowners to do this.
I couldn't believe what I saw. The bank has trees on it.
There's about 12 inches, there's about 12 inches that are clear from the front of that center concrete.
So how can the water not come? I mean, it has no other choice.
And we have that issue in other places in this township too. We met as a group with our representatives from Burke County Conservation District and our engineer and the representative from Senator Getheart's office, I think it's April, to discuss these issues because we have a lot of erosion of our stream banks. We've been applying for grants to address a lot of those issues with Willow Creek because it flows through most of the township. And so we have all this erosion sedimentation that does deposit a lot of silt, a lot of mud at a number of our bridges and culverts, culvert bridges. So we have the one at Cornerstone, we have the one, obviously at 73, and we have the one at West Walnut Tree Drive that also are partially blocked. So it's been, it's been a difficult process. But we are committed to doing it, and we're also going to be talking about amending our stormwater ordinance too, so that we can address beyond the 100-year flood legally within our township. But I think that a lot more can be done, and I've personally been pursuing this already for a number of years because it's causing a lot of issues. Besides flooding, we also have erosion of our roads and our bridges, like at West Walnut Tree, unfortunately. And we're in a cycle, we're getting so many storms in such a short period of time.
Hart Myers, 49 Spirit Card. I understand that we don't have any control over the act of God, whether it be two inches, four inches, six inches, eight inches, 12 inches, whatever. But I know as residents on the far side of Willow Creek, we all hold our breath when it rains. Do you all?
I'm like, I'm dreading tomorrow.
I've got a neighbor beside me that has $10,000 worth of damage that insurance won't cover. I don't have 10 grain. I'm a firm believer in if you always do what you always did, you always get what you always got. When was the last time that creek, that creek was great? Was it ever? Has anybody ever considered taking a pin here, a curve, a lot of those things? There's pin here occurring in that creek.
Yeah, I know, I'm going to let you address some of your questions because.
What do you expect the water to do, not overflow?
A couple of years ago, if you let me speak, I propose that we start looking at doing exactly that because we have a lot of erosion sedimentation. I had serious flooding on my farm, it's a little big river on my farm too, so I can sympathize with that. I had some damage, not to my buildings, but to my farm property. So it definitely is a problem. It's something that I've brought up now. It's very expensive, but I also asked for grants applications to be put in again this year, and the rest of the board wouldn't pursue that for that specifically. It's a comprehensive problem. It needs a comprehensive insurance solution.
You're talking about several entities who do nothing. You're talking about the EPA who does nothing. Three years ago, I tried to get hold of the EPA to have this fixed when our backyard flooded, they did nothing. So then we turn to, we turn to God and tell him not to rain, don't make it rain.
I mean, at some, at some, at some point, I can't tell you how many people have said, I'm selling this house, I'm out of here. Who's going to buy it?
I'm gone in the spring.
Who's going to buy it?
That's enough.
Who's going to buy it? It's all over the news, it's all over the, it's, who's going to buy my house?
Five years, three flooded.
And what am I going to do? Lie to people and say, no, it's never flooded?
We live at the bottom of the hill, quite honestly. Everything up on the hill is coming down.
I'm not blaming you personally. I don't want you to see it that way. But we can't just keep saying, we're working on it, we're working on it. At some point, we have to have a solution.
Let me ask you a question, how would you fix it?
How would I fix it? I would push harder.
Okay, what would you do to push harder though? Tell them to remove all the homes so that there's no?
Ask them to come speak to the township residents.
Yeah.
I think all of us agree with everything that you said.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm not trying to be difficult.
I understand, I understand. With that being said, I think I and the staff have agreed that we will push harder because these are issues that are becoming more clear. Heidi mentioned some of the grants, you know, we applied for a grant that was for $357,000 this year. You know, it's something that we're going to continue to have to pursue. In terms of dredging the river, I'm just going to be totally honest with you. We don't have the funds, and we won't get approved for DEP doing it.
They're going to permit.
Now, you know, honestly, what we can do is start taking a little piece at a time. I mean, this monster is a whale, and there's only one way to eat that, and that's one piece at a time.
Well, let me go back in time a little bit. The first time we had this flood, I went to Cornerstone Law, and I talked to your attorney about why it wasn't disclosed when we signed our contract, that it was a flood zone. He said, there's nothing you can do, you're screwed. Nothing you can do.
That's probably even before I was alive, honestly. So, maybe not, but, you know, we can't control what has been done. We can only move forward from this point.
Well, turn again, like I said, if you always do what you always did, you always get what you always got.
I think we agree, and I think we're not doing that.
But we have done some things.
You have.
We've gone in, we've cleaned the creek out, our roof crew has been out there. Trying to do this to make sure, we're trying to do all the.
What if, what if a levee would be built to alleviate the water problem?
So what would we do with it?
I mean, where would we put it?
It's the same, it's the same thing we're running into. It's still going to go, it has to go through the state. Anything in any weather has to go through the state. So we just can't go in and start messing with it without being fined or, I mean, the cost to do that is astronomical. And I hear you, I'm right, I do civil grading and drainage for a living. And I wish there was more you can do, but your hands are tied. And that's, that's the sucky part about government. They're holding their hands to the fire in this.
I have one follow-up question. If we've gone in and removed a lot of the debris, which I know has happened, why hasn't that happened at the bridge at 73?
Against the state, we cannot go there and do it.
So we can clean the rest of it, but we can't cut.
You got it.
What about? What about homeowners?
Can I jump in?
Can I go in there and pull crack out?
Can I jump in really quick? So part of the issue is that PennDOT needs to be the ones to do it. We actually did offer to do it ourselves, and then they would make us whole in a different way at some other point. And they refused that offer. Part of that is because the cost associated with doing it, they justify as being too much, and they don't want to trust the township. And I'm not being disrespectful at all to them. They don't want to trust the township to do it to them. With that being said, they have, I think, 50 guys for the entire county to maintain all of the roads, all of the bridges. And if you think about how we have six for all of our roads, and they have all the bigger ones, that's a few guys. So we are pushing on them, we've texted them, called them multiple times, emailed them. I think that they want to make good on cleaning that out, and I think that that will be something that they do. But we're just pushing on them harder and harder to make it happen.
Can you share with the residents who we can contact and help on your behalf?
Through public channels, yes. We're not going to give out their phone numbers though, just being totally honest. We can, we can do that.
But I don't want it.
Yeah.
But it might help to have more than just.
Their representatives.
Your state representatives are going to be your best, your best line of defense here. And now, since I'm hoping FEMA is going to become involved with this whole event, to bring it up to FEMA because they have some mitigation events that they will work with as well. It's just, will they do it? And what are the damages that, I mean, everybody has damages, has got to report it. I can't emphasize that enough. Okay, everybody who has damages has got to let us know. So you can be placed on that list because they look at the numbers. They look at the expenses that you lose, and they say, oh, it's only $10,000. Okay, well, if only one person reports $10,000, they only look at $10,000 for the township. They look at $200,000 or 1.2 million. Then it gets their attention, that's when you get Pima and FEMA. And we've got some other agencies that volunteer. I mean, they've come in and they've brought us cleaning kits. They have set up meetings in Exeter Township because they were hit as well. And I strongly urge you to go down and see them. I do. I think it's important that our voices be heard to those people. And they're going to, in return, take those voices back to their agencies, and their agency heads are going to take them to their elected representatives. I've been through this, not at this level before. I mean, this was a lot of water. But we, I've dealt with other situations where we've had extreme flooding. And I've watched people carry their furniture from their basement first floor up to their second and third floor, and I thought.
That's what we did.
Yeah, why would, you know, if I'm living in a place and I've got to do that, I'm not going to, I'm not going to want to do that. But they loved their home, they loved being by the river, and they weren't willing to move away. So they were willing to do what it takes. We had a house that was raised eight foot off the ground by FEMA at their expense to try to alleviate the flooding. So there are issues, they, there are, there are resolves. Some basements will come in and they'll put what they call floodgates in, but you're not going to be able to use your basement. So you lose one floor of your house. Are you willing to do that and get the return from FEMA to pay for the cost of that? You know, those are all thoughts that you have to come up with. And unfortunately, your area was the area where they took and removed that basement level to the first floor. So you haven't been paying flood insurance, okay? So you had the benefit of the money, but now you don't have the benefit of the flood insurance.
But your flood insurance will not cover your property. Your flood insurance will only cover the mechanicals which get ruined in that property.
Right.
My furnishing, my everything that's down there, flood insurance wouldn't have covered it. It doesn't matter if I would have paid $2 million for flood insurance. It would not cover any of my furnishings or my personal belongings that were in that section. It will only cover, you have your furnace.
Washer, your dryer.
Your washer and dryer. I don't have any of that, most of us probably. You know? So you say get flood insurance, and if it was.
Well, I'm not telling you to get flood insurance.
No, I'm just saying, if you would have had it, it would have, you know, you weighed your balances. It wouldn't have done anything for me. I lost my entire basement, just like most people. Flood insurance wouldn't have done me any good.
And that's where if FEMA comes in, there may be some resolves in there? I can't promise what FEMA is going to do. I can't. I can tell you that the township has stepped it up. We've brought dumpsters out to various areas so that you can at least do that at our expense. Okay?
But the problem is, how am I going to get all that to the dumpster? I have a car.
I understand that, that's why I believe we have located it a couple of different locations.
Can you share where they are? Because a lot of us don't, a lot of us don't know where the dumpsters are, and they have lots of stuff.
So do you want to go first, or do you want me to share? Because I'm okay, well, there's one, there's one woman standing up.
I just want to follow through with the insurance because, you know, we've not owned our home that long, we're here 20 years. But this is the first time this has happened to us, and, you know, I'm on the phone with the insurance company. They're telling me that, well, you don't have flood insurance. Great, but we have sub-pump. Well, the water was coming down through the electric panel. The fire company is saying you absolutely have to cut power to your entire house. Now they're not covering it because I don't have a backup battery sub-pump.
I would take that to the insurance commission.
That's, so that's where we're at. So now I'm going, okay, I've got a daughter who's heading to college, comes, you know, fall. I'm taking the book money that I had set aside to her to take my basement, pull everything out. Where are we supposed to get the money to help cover stuff that has happened that's completely out of our control when never, well, I didn't buy flood insurance, I'm not in a flood zone.
I understand.
But I'm now on Southview Road, 120 Southview Road. And my neighbors sit here, and we're all going, what the hell do we do? And where is the dumpster? Where's the communication for this? Because I just spent today $485 for diamond disposal to bring me a dumpster tomorrow morning. Had I known that, I wouldn't have booked the $500 dumpster. That's how many more books for my child. Do I take away college so I can pay for repairs that should have never happened? I mean, I realize that it's Mother Nature that nobody can prevent any of this from happening, but for Christ's sake, like, what do I do now? We are not alone. We need to be together as a community, not just keep thinking, well, let's figure it out in a couple of years. It's happened this many years ago, but we never fixed anything apparently.
We have.
Really? Because why are we all sitting here with the same problems and concerns?
Because we've had more rain in this storm than we've had in the previous storm.
And we could have even more rain in the next storm. But if insurance is going, well, really sorry, you now need to have a battery backup. What's next? The battery of the battery of the battery backup?
I can't answer insurance questions. But at one point, we, there was an ark that was built. If we have that much rain, none of us are going to survive it.
Where's the communication of these dumpsters are going to be available? Because there probably would have been many more people here tonight had they known there even wasn't a meeting tonight.
How many do we have?
So there are three out back of the township building here. There's one at Community Park, there will be another one. Keith, is it on?
Faith Drive.
Faith Drive. The reason that they were not coming out was my call. We only got the other four today, and our concern was for folks who were not calling and asking where the debris to be put. We were afraid that people would.
But are folks like me now better out $485 unless they're kind enough to reimburse my money?
I was wrong, I was wrong.
And then my question is, how are we supposed to get the stuff to the dumpster? I mean, I've got drywall I had to take apart. Where am I going to go with that in my car? I'm going to put it in the back of my car and drive it up to a dumpster, then come back and try and load up my car again with drywall and come back.
I mean, this is how I'm going to get it to the dumpster.
That was the reason for the strategic locations that we chose, to make it easier for you to get there. The township can't pay for trucks and stuff like that. And our guys are all out, busy trying to alleviate the next storm coming tomorrow.
But it's nice that you've got the dumpsters, but how are we going to get the stuff to the dumpsters? Is the issue. I have a refrigerator. How am I going to get and how am I going to carry or put a refrigerator? And it's not going to fit in my car.
Yeah, I know this is going to be an answer that people don't like to hear, but this is where you guys got to ask your neighbors that have trucks to help. The township does not have the resources to be able to provide that for everybody. Even if we tried to, we wouldn't be able to do it in enough time, and folks would not be able to happen.
How about outsourcing?
You can also contact Land and Lions Club. We've helped people so far take their mattresses and stuff to the dumpster. We will be there if we can to help you. So, email me. I'm president of Land and Lions Club. Email me or talk to me tonight, we'll figure out what we can set up, okay?
And we were discussing putting a group together of people who were able to help others with their equipment and things like that. Again, that takes time, and it's going to be online, because that's the quickest way to reach most people.
Well, in the meantime, what do you do when you've now got mold growing within thirty-six hours? I've got mold in my basement that I'm not supposed to go down there and breathe, but yet I have to be the one, and I can't press these. Because I'm pulling panel. Do I look like I'm in shape to be pulling panel? I'm not. I've got my angina, I hurt every single day of my life, and I'm down in my basement in mold pulling panel. Because I have to do that. Who else is going to do it for me? There's huge concerns here.
We appreciate that. But on the same token, it's not the township's job to intervene on every problem. We're providing resources. We're going to try and make them more available to folks. We're going to do that. But this is not something that the township can do everything for. A lot of this, we need community members' help for.
Well, you need clear communication to begin with, because that seems to be a huge problem right there. There should be no reason why we wouldn't have known there were dumpsters coming, whether there was only a couple or now you have many. We should know these things. It's called communication.
Where on Faith Drive is there a dumpster?
It will be there. It will be openly open.
I don't think all of them are dispatched.
The problem is, we had to wait for the recovery level as well. So, we couldn't just call and say, bring them right now. Well, we don't have it. Okay. Because all of this is going on at the same time.
I mean, I would be lucky enough to get one. I'd call Monday morning.
Regarding the Baby Creek Park, there's hardly any drains along that whole area there. A lot of our flooding that we did get on Southview Road could have been prevented if there had drains installed back there at the park to alleviate when the rainfall did come down through. There's hardly any drains in that park. If you guys can install a drain or had somebody went into it, that would alleviate a lot of the flooding we did have.
We walked that today, and there, so the way the work is designed, it should never really get to that point. Normal storms.
In theory, it should, but it did.
Sure, sure. I'm down east-western, I get the flooding and stuff, too. I get whatever comes down from you guys. But, so, this was a thousand-year storm. We got the NOLA report, this is a thousand-year storm. Nothing anywhere is designed ever for a thousand-year storm. A hundred-year is pretty much the max. Like, that's engineering standard. So, the other thing, too, when I walked there, there's a lot of other debris being in there. So, like, I watched, I witnessed, I was out at eleven o'clock at night with the guys, and I watched them pull a rider mower, and I got wedged into the bridge. And that thing was laying sideways, completely clogging one of the, there's things that happen with this much rain that you just can't account for. So, some of the stuff, and I'm not saying it was at that particular area, I'm not going to call any resident out, but there's some areas that the development was designed to work a certain way. And homeowners, either the original owner or the next owner, the next owner decides they're going to come in, and they say, well, I don't like that ditch there. So, they're going to throw what they think is a suitable fix. They throw a four-inch pipe in there and fill it in, so they have a nice flat lawn. Well, you just totally wiped out the drainage there. And until there's a problem like this, we don't know it. And then when we go and walk, because people are calling in, we go and walk, and then we see that there's either a pile, like, one of the things I saw, I noticed was tree trimmings. You know, we provide the recycling center here for yard waste, but sometimes people say it's just easier to throw it over the fence and forget about it. Well, that stuff gets into the ditches, gets jammed into the storm basin. I mean, I climbed into the storm pipes and looked at it, and they were plugged to the top. It's just stuff that, it compounds, and like I said, the creeks have been, this last year for sure, our road crews have been out whenever they got the time to go out there and pull out the major debris, major clogs. The creeks are probably cleaner than they've been in twenty years right now.
Maybe not right now.
Well, yeah.
Actually, they are maybe right now.
So, but the long story short, there's a lot of components to this, and it's not, believe me, there's some things that I saw today, too, that I don't necessarily agree with, but that was the engineering standard back then. You know, things have changed from the early nineties till now. The standards have taken different.
To get stuff updated, wonder if the engineering change?
As far as, like, the pipes and stuff?
Pipes.
Well, it's not something that necessarily gets looked at if there's not an issue. So, if there's no issue, we don't know there's a problem. And they were approved, because it was the condition of standard back when they were built.
A lot of it was the seventies.
Yeah, yeah, sure. A lot of seventies, yeah, yeah.
Or any codes at all.
Yeah.
If we wanted to stop this completely, we would have just had no development at all, and nobody would have known, but it still would have happened. The storms would have still happened, only there wouldn't have been any homes here. So, who would have been affected? Nobody. So, they come along, and we had a major growth seventies and eighties, okay? And the nineties. But they started slowing down in the nineties then. So, we had a big growth in this township during that time period. None of us here were a part of that growth. None of us here were part of the process for rules, regulations, or anything. And the state came along, and they started mandating different things. Like, some of them mandate saying that you have to have zoning requirements, and you have to allow this to be there and that to be there. So, it's not like we can say, oh, stop the growth. We can't. So, the laws and the municipal planning code give us guidance. So, that's what we have to follow, or we get sued. And when we get sued, you guys get sued, because the money comes out of your pockets and our pockets for every lawsuit. So, that's the reality of it, and everything is uphill. It's sad to say that that has occurred, but it has. And that's why we're in some of the problems we're in now, because back then, everything was twenty-twenty. Now, it's all hindsight. We can't change what happened. We have to change going forward and say, what can we do to stop this? We'll never stop the rain. I mean, we can put a dome over the township, but that won't stop the rain from saturating the ground.
It's still coming.
It's still coming in. So, we have to address it, and we're going to. But we're going to have to really put our mind to the grind and see what we can do. And there may not be an answer. I'm going to tell everybody that. There may not be a way that we can say, we're going to resolve everybody's problem, because Willow Creek is not a river. It's a creek.
Sometimes it was a river last year.
It was a river on Sunday. Yes, it was. I was there. So, I know it was. And there's nothing we can do to stop that. And even if the bridge at seventy-three was open, we're still going to have flooding. That would have still happened. We could have free flow all the way down through, and we would have still had that.
I agree with that. I agree that this storm was so intense that we still would have had flooding.
Yes.
But the flooding would have been at a twenty, not a hundred and flat.
Well, we are going to try to work on the situation. We're going to brainstorm different things. We're already discussing that we're going to bring the engineers together. We're going to bring the different facets of our road crew, our board of supervisors. We're going to look at the different laws that we've got to follow and see what we can do, what laws we may have to change as per zoning and things like that to try to make it so that nobody new is going to face this. But we can't change what's here already.
Do the storm drains?
Yeah.
Jay Bry, six-hundred Wall Tree Drive?
Yes, sir.
So, I had flooding like everybody else, but my situation's a little bit different in that, quite frankly, in the last three years, my yard flooded three times, four times in the last twelve years. But it's all because the retention pond at Melrose Place was not done correctly. And the water, instead of going into the retention pond, went around the retention pond through my yard. Flooded my yard, washed out my pool again. I have over seventeen thousand dollars so far, and I haven't even gotten to some of the repairs yet. It was fixed, you know, three years ago. This time it flooded because the grate, the inlet for the retention pond, has a gate that was closed and bolted shut. And that filled with debris, so now the water couldn't get into the retention pond. And then it came around the retention pond through my yard again for the third time in four years. I tried calling Foligno, who, I called the township office, and they told me that Foligno Group still owns the retention pond. I can't find Foligno Group. They, like, disappeared off the face of the planet. I had their attorney's number. I tried calling that number again. I called the Conservation District three years ago, and they told me that that pond has not been approved yet, three years ago. I don't know if it's been approved since, but I don't know if that's been addressed. Josh was out on Sunday. I really appreciated the fact he came over. He was looking around. I showed him around, showed him what's going on. And, you know, I'd like to get that, obviously, resolved, because even as bad as it was, I shouldn't have had flooding at all. If that retention pond had worked correctly, I would not have, I would have had zero damage.
I'm going to speak to that, too, a little bit. So, yes, I'm glad you showed me what you did show me, because that did prompt, you know, we got Tom involved in that right away. And I also went up and looked at the other pond, which feeds that pond. We got major issues at that pond, too. And we are, that is being addressed. So, what that is at this point, it's too early to tell, but they've been notified, meaning the Foligno Group, whoever, Berkshire, whatever you said. Berkshire Builders has been brought into it. So, again, I do agree with you on that. I looked at it, Tom looked at it, and it just doesn't, something doesn't make sense.
Does Berkshire Builders maintain the pond now?
I believe it's them, yeah, correct, yeah.
And they were supposed to be out there today.
Didn't, were they?
There was nobody there.
I was going to say, I specifically, I went to the park today myself to meet with Tom and Keith to walk the creek at the park. And I observed that, too. I did not see them, so.
I didn't see Berkshire Builders or anybody.
I didn't see anybody there. No trucks or nothing, so I need that looked at.
I spoke to him, Berkshire Builder representative, Monday morning. They were supposed to be out there, I know they haven't, and he didn't answer my phone call today. So, but there are going to be modifications made to that gate, and modifications made to that overflow structure.
If that, I mean, you know, I have a snow blower, and if that gets blocked, there's a shear pin that protects the motor and the gears. Maybe there could be a shear pin or something on that gate. Obviously, you want to keep kids from going in there when it's not raining. But once it's raining, like, when that pressure builds, if that gate had opened, again, I would have, I would not be out seventeen thousand dollars right now.
One of the things that I don't, I didn't discuss with Tom, and is, I was talking to somebody else that was affected in that area, and there is an HOA back in there. And I guess it's, I don't see why an HOA president couldn't have a key or something, and it doesn't need to be bolted. But if there's a lock on it, that they have a key, the builder has a key, and the HOA president would have a key in case if there was an emergency like that.
Well, I can address some of that, because the builder has not turned over the HOA to the homeowners.
And they refuse to take it.
And they don't want, because.
Well, I wouldn't want to rely on somebody remembering, hey, I better go and lock this gate.
Well, no, no, I know, so that's part of the problem here, is that the Berkshire Builders has not properly maintained it to take care of this issue, and then.
And then once the rain, once it's coming out of that pipe, like, I wouldn't go down there and get anywhere close to that pipe when the water's coming out.
And it's a safety issue, it absolutely is, yeah. You don't want somebody, you don't want Joe Homer going down there and getting swept under, and God forbid, something tragic happens, you know? So, but that's the sole reason those gates are on there, is to keep kids from going in there, so.
So, we are aware of it.
Yeah.
And we're trying to address it. But we don't have the control over it that the owner does.
Yeah.
So, we're trying to address it, and we're trying to address a lot of issues.
Have you guys been able to talk to the Conservation District about the policy? Because my father-in-law is an engineer, designs these things. I remember vaguely, three years ago, he and I talked about it, and he said, there's some money that the township would actually get, or somebody would get from the Conservation District once it's approved or something? I don't know. They hold it in escrow or something?
We've been trying for grants for years.
Well, but then to address an issue, because you and I, I talked about it, Melrose Place still has forty-some thousand dollars in cash escrow with the township. And this was a public improvement that they still are maintaining, are supposed to be in charge, let me just say in charge of it. So, potentially, there's some money that the town, in escrow, that could be used to address that.
And maybe it could be used to address the damage to my property.
There's also.
But mine was all man-made. Again, if that works properly, I have zero, in the last three storms, and between the last three storms is over twenty thousand dollars in damage. And again, I haven't even addressed some of the issues yet, where I'm going to have to have land scares come in and other things. I could be looking at thirty, forty thousand dollars easily to do some of the repairs and stuff. And if that thing functioned properly, I would have had zero flooding. In the thousand-year storm, in the hundred-year storm we got three years ago, in the hurricane that came through, I wouldn't have had any. But it's all because of that retention pond.
There's been problems with the pond since it was built. And then the Conservation District had to redo the model of the pond, actually.
Right.
Or something for.
Well, we had them redo several things.
And the wall blew out, too.
Yeah. So, you know, it's just, we've got to get the problematic issues resolved.
There is a meeting, and I don't want to steal Keith's thunder, but there is a meeting, tandem meeting set up on Monday to walk with the Berks County Conservation District representative, who is a branch of DDP. So, there is a meeting, tandem meeting set up for Monday.
Walk where, I'm sorry?
Going to walk most of the streams that have been impacted. That's his position.
If they go by the bridge one-seventy-three, can you see much of it anywhere?
There's a few along the way.
I'm John Flick here. I live on Southview Road in Limestone Village. You know, down Hope Road there, underneath, that always clogs up, and is there any kind of schedule or proactive cleanup that the township follows? Is there a schedule? Because it just seems like we could get ahead of this maybe a little more. And is there any active initiative in prevention? Because, yeah, people dump stuff, and, you know, that's where it goes. Whenever it rains, it all washes down there. Just be interested in any comments you have on that.
Well, I think, Keith, you might be able to answer some of that. These guys have been out cleaning the stream, where they have authorization to their property and things like that. But, you know, you can only do so much. And then the storm creates a different problem.
Like, okay, so, we've lived here over thirty years. We were there for the first big storm, and we got four feet of water in our basement. This time, we were very lucky. We didn't get water. We had a little bit of a trickle. We were very lucky. But it was the same thing. The creek comes out from.
What is your address of?
One-sixteenth Southview Road. We are Southview. Comes across the field and down a hill into our houses. There's nothing you can do to stop it. So, back twenty years ago, when it happened the first time, we moved there, we had no idea that there was even a creek back there. We were young, we needed a house, we moved in. This creek came, I mean, the water came out of the creek, because they had moved the creek to build our houses. So, we were one of the first five or six houses. They had moved that creek so they could build our houses. So, when this storm hit and we got the four feet of water, I'm assuming it's the township, decided they were going to put the creek back to where it originally was, which was great, because really, you shouldn't move water. It's going to go where it wants to go. And we thought we were good. Now, it happened again. Like I said, we were very fortunate this time, we didn't get water, but everybody around us did. And there are people around us that are losing basement walls. So, I understand that everybody got water, but I truly believe there are houses in the township that should be where they are. One hundred block of Southview on the even side, we are ten feet below the creek. Because if that creek comes out, we are down. Everybody else is above it. We are below it. So, when it comes out, it comes out and it comes right at our houses. And if you could see it, it's, like, it's coming at you, and there's nothing you can do to stop it. So, I truly believe there are some houses that really should not be there.
And I'm going to be in agreement with you.
But they are.
But they are.
Yeah, they are. But unfortunately, it's like everybody else said, like, what are we supposed to do? We can't sell them, because who's going to want to be there? But.
Well, you know, short of saying what we're going to do and taking a look at it, I don't have answers for anybody tonight, and I won't be able to.
The other thing I noticed yesterday, I was out driving around, and I know there's lots of things that need to be cleaned up. I realize that. But that park behind our house, everybody loves that park, and granted, it's great. They were cleaning up that park like crazy. There were people out there, they were dredging the mud, they were cleaning up the basketball courts. And as I'm driving by, there are still tree branches and brush hanging over the actual creek. And I thought, maybe the priority should not be about cleaning the basketball courts. It should be about making the creeks a little bit more open, considering there's more rain cut.
But those people don't necessarily have authority to do all private property. Whereas, it wasn't the township necessarily who was doing all the cleaning. It was people who used the park.
Oh, no, there were township trucks.
Well, yeah, it's our responsibility for the park. But our fire company was out there washing stuff up, too.
Oh, sure, sure. I understand that.
But there were a lot of volunteers that came out because they used the basketball courts. But there were a lot of volunteers that came out because they used the basketball courts and stuff.
Oh, yes, I know, and I saw that, there were voice scouts, and I, I mean, that's, that's great.
It's one part amongst many.
Right, it, it just, as a person who has watched all the people around them take on water, I thought, really scraping the basketball court is not that big of a deal, can we get the branches out of the creek?
And they aren't permitted to do that.
They aren't?
No, they can't just walk down through the stream and.
But they're doing it today.
Not today.
Like, not the volunteers, no, but the people down in the bulldozers, scraping the court, they're not volunteers.
Yeah, debris out.
So, no, no, we can.
Yeah, we take debris out, but we cannot direct.
So today, today, they were digging out the creeks, and they were with bulldozers, and they were doing that today.
Yes.
It's just, in my mind, I thought that should have been done first.
No, they were pretty much reinforcing.
They were, yeah, they were, we were reinforcing the, the stream banks, putting rocks in, so, part of that was eroding the road away. We had a four-inch gas main that ran from Park Road down to Hope Road, that was completely exposed, there was lawn tractor underneath it, there was debris from the farm above on Hill Road that was wrapped up in it, so, we couldn't touch any of that, until they came in and shut that down and cut that out.
I know.
And then, then when, when that was done, finally, we could come back in and try to save what we have, which was meaning putting big rocks in there, so revetment, just, just push that creek back into place. One of the things is.
Had, had they not done anything with the creek bank, and you got another heavy rain tomorrow.
It would have been saved right back to the same spot.
Because it was only this part going.
The creek banks were gone.
Yep.
Like, the lane off of Park Road, the lane going down, part of the road is gone, it was all washed away.
Yeah.
So they had to rebuild that, and they were putting boulders back, as, they're building, you have bankmen back.
Yeah.
They weren't just out there, oh, let's get some basketball going and scrape, yes, they did that, that took minutes.
But they, they had dump trucks with boulders, and heavy equipment putting boulders, they were rebuilding the stream bank.
I don't care how good the stream bank is, we had ten inches of rain.
In saturated ground.
Right, so, I, I have to commend you guys, there's a certain amount that it can take, and when you get the ten inches of rain, I'm not sure.
It's flooding all over the east coast, I mean, it's not damaging.
It's not gonna spread, that you gotta start at step one, and it's gonna take a while to get around everything. So, so the main priorities right now for our guys are to try to mitigate the circumstances that could create another storm situation later, like, getting some of the garbage out of the way, so it doesn't block up, and things like that, but there are so many places to do that at. So, that, we're, we're working at it, and we're gonna continue to work at it, um, but it's a process.
And one of the things too, is we have to take care of a lot of the assets that are super critical, like, we had sinkholes opened up that had gas lines that were exposed, so we had to get U G I out there to do inspections, we had to get, you know, once the U G I said they're okay, we had to go out there and plate them and make sure they were covered, so we don't have any other further damages. Uh, the other thing too, right now, and a lot of people don't know this, is our sewage treatment plant took a huge hit. There, there's an estimate, right now it's an estimate at two, over two million dollars worth of damage to our sewage treatment plant. So, uh, the water breached a levee that was around that, and, you know, but, again, we, you mentioned about building a levee around here, it happens, and they, I asked the, the director of the, the treatment plant, in all the years that he's been involved with Water Authority, has this ever happened? Never, never happened, they had to emergency evacuate while they were hooking up the emergency pumps, they jumped in their personal vehicles and left, left everything the way it was, because it came that fast, so.
They left vehicles running, that's how quickly they got out of there.
Eleven o'clock at night, I showed off a vehicle running from three o'clock in the, or three o'clock in the afternoon, so, they, they bailed, they got out of there fast. So those are the assets that, if we didn't take care of first, it would cause more damage and cost the taxpayers more money. I mean, this is the stuff that we're going back to the state and the feds for, is to help cover that, but, we, we feel you, I, I, I'm working, I'm working full-time myself, but I've been with these guys probably half my week so far, and I, I messaged my boss in Tennessee and said, hey, we got some major problems, I'll, I'll be back on when I'm on, and, and I'm trying to, trying to get answers for people, people have been calling me left and right, they've been calling the township left and right, you know, all of us have been fielding calls, so, it's been, we, we do definitely feel what you guys are dealing with, it's just, our hands are tied, and a lot of it's with the state, and I know it's not an answer everybody wants to hear, but, that's the fact of the matter, and the other fact of the matter is, is the funding, you know, it's, if we can't get the funding from the state, it's coming on us, so.
So you said the governor has to also sign off that it was a state of emergency?
Yes.
How do we find out that, and do we have to wait for that to put a claim in to get any money? I know we came here with your name and address.
It's a process that climbs that ladder.
But, then how will we be notified that, yes, the governor has signed, now you can go do this to get your repair money?
If you've made your claims here, and, and the windshield surveys were done, the more extensive surveys were done, and your name, address, and phone number were all recorded, uh, you're on a list, okay, all that information goes to Berks County E M A, and then it goes up from there, as they send it up for evaluation by the state, to P E M A. Okay, and then P E M A, once they say, listen, it's crossed our county lines, uh, it's crossed our state lines, now FEMA looks for a dollar amount, and once it crosses that dollar amount for FEMA, then they come in and they set up, like, little office centers, and they might have loans or grants, they might have, uh, other funds and, and help that they can utilize, okay, but it's, it's a, it's a long process.
Now, I came in and I gave the, my name and the address, and you, it, do you need more than that, I mean, that's all I gave.
You wanna take pictures.
I have those on my phone.
Okay, everybody wants to take pictures, you wanna record your expenses, I mean, that's all information that they're gonna ask you for. They're gonna ask you what mitigation efforts you did, they may even offer some mitigation efforts for your home, if there is something that can be done to, to stop this from happening over and over and over again, because for several of you, it has been. So, they're gonna say, listen, we may be able to help you with a mitigation effort, but you're gonna have to do something, like I said, when they're talking about floodgates, where they say, we'll put floodgates in your house, but you're not gonna be able to use your basement then for a rec room, okay? They may raise your house, they may have other alternatives, it's gonna be involving our engineers, it's gonna be involving all their agencies, but it's, it's a time production problem, you know, there's only twenty-four hours in the day, and they're gonna have their offices open, they work day, daylight to, to nightlight. I've worked with them, so I know what they do, and they're coming out, and they're looking, they're evaluating, they're, they're coming up with ideas, but it does take time, and then it takes time to get the money done, but the first step is reporting it. Anybody who hasn't reported it, you're never gonna get anywhere with it.
Please, I mean, pass that on to your neighbors and stuff, and we'll put it out, it's been out there on our end of it too, but, please, please tell them to report it, I mean, right now, uh, we're, we're with the authority, we're, and the township.
The homeowners that we anticipate.
Yeah, and, and the homeowners, we're, we're about six million dollars already, so far, so, that's why I said, we need.
So do you need a dollar amount, because I just gave my name and address and email.
That'll be part of the, the process.
Okay.
So somebody will be in contact with you, from either our emergency management, or the state organization, as they start doing it.
Okay.
There are clean, by the way, there are cleanup buckets and everything, if you're still dealing with stuff, uh, there are rooms and stuff like that, we have some here, there are some at various other locations, the fire company has some, some of the churches have them, so they're out there, and this is information, I don't know how many people get the newspaper anymore, it's not much of a newspaper, it's been put on Channel Sixty Nine News, uh, it's been put on our, our website, I know I, I put it out there. Uh, Eric Baumann has a Maine Creek Residence site, he has it out there, um, so, the information, I, I don't know how else to get it out there at this point, other than, most people are using social media, and we have been using that, and we've been trying to get it out by word of mouth, um, so, you know, keep in touch with the township if you've got some major concerns, uh, because they're gonna know the latest information as it comes by, because they get the calls right away.
So is that how we would get notified, that the governor has agreed to sign it off?
I would, I would listen to the news media.
So we can go ahead and do what we need to do, because he did declare, signed off the declaration?
What I would do is, you could start cleaning up your properties.
Oh, yeah, I did.
Okay, because of the fact that you could have mold and everything, but I would go down to Exeter, sit down with their folks down there, and there may be some helps out there already, for, for people that, that we aren't even aware of right now. I know there are church groups helping, uh, people to help clean up, ma'am, you, you might be, uh, you know, advantaged by that as well. So, there are some groups out there that are going around and helping, there are some church groups that come out for all these incidents. They offer to, to give you food while you're doing cleanups, they offer to help you clean up, there's any number of things, but you gotta plug into them.
Look on Channel Sixty Nine's website, tonight on Channel Sixty Nine News, there is an eight-eight-eight number, view the call where they're set up down there in Exeter until Monday, like Dave was mentioning.
Yeah, I think I seen a feed on their little website.
They're down there for a couple, they're down there for a couple days yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've been there for a while.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, um, because I don't wanna be like, you know, I don't wanna be bitch, but, um, my name's Andy Schlegel, I'm at one-ten Southview Drive. Same concerns.
Southview Crew right here.
Same concerns as everybody else.
Didn't they make a TV show called Southview?
What's that?
I said, didn't they make a TV show called Southview?
Vic, can you do me a favor?
Major, major damage to my home, I am attached to the house that has no basement foundation.
Okay.
Um, the way that water just ran, like, we were in, like, an alleyway or something, like, something has to be addressed or looked at, because it literally just ran right down, or like a river, like, it was just.
It was a river everywhere.
Again, I, I was there today, looked at it with the engineer and with Keith, we walked it, and, and I know exactly where you're talking about, how it drops down, and, and you guys have that swath right through there.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know which neighbor it was that we spoke to, they were out, same deal, everything was out muddy and shovel, and it was actually right next to the house that was cordoned off with the caution tape.
I'm attached to that house.
Okay, okay, so we, so I was there, we looked at it, uh, again, yeah, it's, it's, in, in this type of storm, this event, you know, it, it's that, it should never reach your place, uh, it came through the center of the pavilion, went down across the base, I mean, you can see the path out west, right across that, hit that, hit that single inlet there, and we, we definitely looked at, maybe some improvements to that inlet area there, maybe building that up a little bit more. I, I just think that, that the system was inundated, and when it came out that pipe, we, because I walked that, there to Hope Road then, there's a lot of debris in that section that's in there, and, and saying, like we were saying, that's, that's technically private property in there. That's what makes it difficult to get in there and clean out, and, you know, maybe you guys as neighbors or something, get in there and say, and I think that's the owner, is that the owner that sprayed the corner of, like, go to the backside part? Yeah, maybe you get ahold of him and say, hey, you know, we'd like to get in there and clean some of this out, you know, because it's, it's, it is, it's bad, there's, there's persisia bushes. It is.
It's coming from above.
It is, absolutely that was, yeah, but, there's a lot hanging in there and stuff, and then when we, when I was in that, that Coke there, looking in the corner there, there's a lot of debris hanging in there, and, uh, you can Keith say, hey, can I reach in there and grab that one tree that was in there, I, I believe you guys tried to get that out of there, that one that was hanging, but it was still attached to the tree. Yeah, they, it was still, it's broken, but it's still attached, so, you know, they can't just go in there and cut that guy's tree, without his permission, but, you know, there's a lot of stuff, there is things that can be done in there to clean that up, but, I, I, I saw it, and, and I just, you know, we're, we're really inundated hard with, with checking things out, but it, it's definitely been noted, and like I said, he, uh, Tom was with today to, to note that, so we can report that back, so.
And just to let you all know, uh, we were out there Sunday, many of us were out there Sunday, some of us couldn't even get out of our homes. I was in contact with some of you on Sunday, I know Josh was, um, we saw what was happening, and there's no way we could have stopped it, but we saw many fire companies from multiple counties.
Firemen were great.
Yes, the fire, the police, the EMS people from all over, our dispatchers did a fantastic job, okay, so we really have to look at all that. Our road crew guys were going out there in this, and, and they were dealing with it, trying to stop what they could, and, and my hats off to every one of them, because we had two people that went down the river that was caused by this, and they were pulled out by river rescue. So, there's more, I mean, there are so many different parts to this storm that we faced, and we're still dealing with, and, and you see the part that you're dealing with, we're looking at the whole picture, we're looking at, at the people who are still hospitalized, we're looking at the people who are still not done cleaning up, like some of you folks, we had the same damage in our homes, but we were out looking at everybody else's first. Our road crew foreman had damage in his house, but he was out dealing with everybody else's damage. Okay, so, this, this storm, my son pump couldn't keep up with it, okay, so, we didn't have, I didn't have nearly what you folks have. I didn't have nearly what you have, so, my heart goes out to you, okay, we, I wish I could stop it.
It's not falling on deaf ears, and like I said, we are definitely pushing to, to make sure that the right parties are involved, and the right organizations, and, uh, that wheel has been spun already, and we are really pushing hard to get these guys on board, and we have, it was, we started this.
Sunday night, we were already working.
Yeah, but we started some of this stuff even before this storm, you know, like I said, the, the whole Seventy Three Bridge, that's been on one thing for months now, so.
Actually, years.
Years.
Yeah, so.
I have one more question.
Sure thing.
How come Limestone Village does not have a retention pond?
I, that was.
I mean, it seems like it is the retention pond.
No, no, believe it or not, the regulations back when that was built did not require a retention.
That's, our houses are built where the retention pond would never get erased.
There kinda was retention pond, I have a door view in the back, but that's when they came in and compacted it, and then they dug the foundations and put the houses in the back.
We're, we're gonna grab these two comments on.
Yeah, Mr. and Mrs. Demming.
Give me one second, because he's starting to be talking.
Okay. Who was that?
Yeah. She's the one with the basement that collapsed.
Yes. Robert, we're gonna get to you as soon as we unmute you.
There you go.
Thank you, go ahead.
Hi, everyone, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak, uh, my name is Robert Farina, I live at four-sixteen Golden Drive. Uh, first, I, I wanna thank Supervisor Mack, uh, for coming out to my property, looking at, uh, the exposed gas line, uh, that we have caused by a sinkhole. Uh, I wanna thank Hunter, uh, who's spoken with both my wife and I on a number of occasions, uh, because we truly understand the, the tremendous amount of uh, pressure and stress you guys are under with everything that's been going on. Uh, and, and really, my, my comment tonight is centered around, I just saw that folks have been talking about retention ponds, uh, things of that sort, is really looking at the piping systems under our property, uh, my, the, the piping system that runs between my neighbor and I on our property, we have, uh, a number of cracks in that pipe, that's been imported, uh, the, the, the drainage system under our property is not adequate, uh, to, to solve the, the issue. Uh, I had water running up through my property, my entire yard was filled, luckily we were able to divert it till my son pump failed, just by the amount of groundwater, and I did have water in my basement, again, uh, not nearly to the extent of the damage that a lot of the folks, uh, speaking tonight have had, uh, so, so, like you, my heart goes out to those folks as well, but, I, I really think it, it's crucial, and I know there's no plans at this point, but really, you know, as you're looking at, uh, all of our mitigation factors moving forward, I, I really urge the board to look at those underground pipes, the quality of those underground pipes, uh, making sure that those are, uh, not cracked, making sure that those replacements occur, so do you think, uh, for the, the families in our neighborhood, uh, if those pipes would have been in working condition, uh, we wouldn't sustain the water damage that we did, so again, uh, I don't require any response to my public comment, I just wanted to, to put that out there, please, uh, look at the quality of those pipes and the repairs to those pipes, uh, and, and again, thanking, uh, the board for coming out, uh, taking a look, getting that gas, uh, exposed gas pipe covered, uh, because that is a little scary when you've got a sinkhole with exposed gas on your property and for your little children. You know, so I thank you for your efforts to get that covered promptly, uh, and, and hopefully get, uh, fixed promptly, so, so thank you for that, please look at those pipes.
And I wanna, I wanna, I, I thank you for calling in tonight too, but it brings up another, a good point here too, I'm gonna share it with everybody, and everybody can kinda understand this, I, I would hope. You know, he brings up a good point, we, we do have some major problems with some of these pipes, I was down in them, Keith was down in them, they're eroded, we have some problems, and people are gonna get upset if we gotta come in there and dig up their properties, uh, I, I don't know how else to tell you guys this, there's easements on land for a reason, and sometimes there's gonna be, there's gonna be failure, we, we're gonna have to come in there and take trees down, we might have to move fences. Just know, we're gonna do what we can to not, to minimize the impact on your properties, but I know some people already reached out and said, hey, am I gonna lose this, am I gonna lose that? I don't know, I don't know if we're going to, but if it's within the easement, unfortunately, it's the right of, of the municipality to go in there and fix that problem, and, I know we're gonna have, we, we, we might start doing some of these repairs, and we're gonna have people come in here, and they're gonna be on fire, be, gonna be upset about it. I don't know what else to tell you, it's, it's a catch twenty-two, if you, if you want some of this drainage fixed, some of this stuff has to get taken care of, that's the casualty of it, and, and, and would you rather have a, a new flowerbed planted, or would you rather be replacing twenty thousand dollar damage in your basement? So, I'm glad that he brought it up, and I'm glad that I did see it, um, and, and I did actually, we had a kind of a, I'm gonna say a funny incident today, wasn't funny for Tom, but it did prompt us to go find, uh, find some, some, some spots, Tom bent over to look for his cell phone, and, or, so he looked at a sinkhole, and his cell phone went straight into it, and, uh,
Thank you, Keith.
Luckily Keith is a fairly short statured guy that rescued his phone and climbed through the pipe, but had he not done that, uh, we, we wouldn't have found out, we, we saw that there was a plastic pipe. And the plastic's not gonna erode, but unfortunately, his phone didn't go in the plastic pipe, it went in the one next to it, which was metal. Keith went through and was like, yeah, the bottom's gone in this pipe, so we do, we, we have realized there's more to this than that, that we've known. And it's gonna cost time, it's gonna cost money, and, and it's gonna be an impact on some of our residents. And we all have, that's why we said this is a good community, we gotta pull together and understand that we're trying to make it right, and this is gonna be the casualty of making it right, so. I do appreciate you bringing that up, and, uh, yeah, I'm glad that I can see it, to, and, and I am your neighbor, so I get the runoff that you don't get.
And just one more comment on that whole issue, if we're not able to come up with the money to do this, we are probably gonna be looking at tax increases to be able to do that. But, in, in overall, and tax increases are horrible to think about, but at the same time, the damages that you folks are, are facing, uh, aren't gonna be anywhere near what the tax increase would be. I mean, our taxes are relatively low, our school taxes are high, but our township taxes are low, and you get a lot for your service. I mean, you've got a full-time police department, we, uh, we fund our fire department and ambulance, uh, we have a road crew, and they're available twenty-four seven. So, you know, to, to start making these repairs, so that it would be, it's a tough decision for us, but I think we're at that point now, or that juncture, we're replacing pipes and things like that. And we know it's gonna cost money, so, I think this year we're gonna have to look at a, a, a tax increase, and I just give you forewarning about it. You know, that's the only way we, I mean, there's no magic tree. If there was, I'm sure we'd all plant one. Okay, we have a few more people online. Is it Patty Demme?
I need to turn the video off because the computer's ability to process the data isn't strong enough. We can hear you, Patty. We can hear you.
First of all, we're sorry for your losses as well.
Through this hole, can you hear us now?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Patty Demme, I'm here with my husband, Richard. Uh, we live at one twelve Southview Road with the famous tape-out back because we do not have any of our foundation in the back of our home. We've also been in our house since they were built, and so this whole creek issue, as, uh, people have said before, is not a new issue, it just. Was the worst ever this time, and, uh, thank you to everybody that's working on this, but, uh, it is. It's, I think the worst thing that happened in our lives, our house is, there's no back wall, and. We have a nurse and a mechanic trying to get through, finding a structural engineer and finding somebody to shore out the home and. You know, then build the wall, is, is probably gonna be sixty thousand dollars until we're all done, but we can't, we couldn't even get the help. And hopefully, we're going to have somebody come out and at least shore the walls up, um, on Monday, but, you know. And I hear all this stuff about the mold, well, everything in our basement will be festering for over a week. So we're gonna go to Exeter tomorrow, um, our insurance company notified us today that we will get nothing, and that was, um. They have not even come out to our home, they're basing this all on photos, which I think is horrendous, and, so we're gonna speak to them at Exeter about this too, but, um. It, it's just.
I'd also like, not to interrupt, but I'd also like to hear, to say that one of the problems that we're gonna have is the space between the homes to get equipment in there to dig the wall and three feet of mud out of my basement. A lot of, there's, there's hardly any room to get anything in between the houses to dig this thing out, that's just the tip of the iceberg. Then, then we got three feet of mud, not to mention a block wall, and that's only the start of it, and again, the insurance informed us today, we get zero, not a penny, not a dime, not nothing. And maybe that's our heartbreak, but you know what, this thing has to be cured and it has to be taken care of, because it, this isn't the first time this happened, this has happened before. And it may take twenty years, and it may take another fifty years, but it is gonna happen again, I guarantee you it will, because it's already happened three times. So, I mean, something has to be done, somewhere, some house, somewhere, because this is getting out of control now. I, I can't even go in my house for crying out loud.
And it's, you know, we don't know if it's, yeah, we just have so many questions, we're gonna come to the township building tomorrow, but they're telling us we need a permit, and, you know, it's just, it's just.
That's the other thing, that's all on us, everything is on us.
We, we got.
My retirement fund is gone.
And, and that's not anybody's.
That's not your fault, and I'm not, I'm crying out loud.
We appreciate what you're doing, but it's just if there were more, we're gonna go to Exeter and see if we can get more resources, but it's just. And it will make us look differently at things in the future, I mean, like if, I don't know, even if our basement got wet and, but half of our house is gone.
Yeah, I mean, every time it rains, you hold your breath because you don't know what's gonna happen, it's crazy.
Even if there was some kind of, I, I know this never happened before, but moving forward, if there would be some kind of, of, um. Plan for people that have no support, um, you know, step one, this is what you should do first, and step two, and maybe this place could help you, but, you know, it's already been almost a week and.
And for community.
Luckily, we had some family members that work in the engineering, but they're not structural engineers, and then it's even harder to find a structural engineer for a resident, so. We learned a lot the hard way, but, um.
And I'd like to apologize if we seem a little corrupt, but we're just.
It's, it's.
We're exhausted, and it's just, we don't know what to do anymore.
It's devastating, and if our house falls down.
We, we understand.
Or unless they, it's gonna be worse. I mean, I don't know.
Patty, I don't know if you're aware, but, uh, I went to school with Aubrey, so if you could, I, I just, I'd like to actually come out and see it anyway, so if you guys are around.
We would, we would love that, um, you just, we, our, our phone is ringing twenty-four seven, trying to coordinate everything, but, uh, we will be there anytime.
They have to just let us know.
Yeah, we just need to.
In Allentown, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see, I see Aubrey's online, so have her reach out to me, and I'd like to come out and see it firsthand anyway, and then, uh, we are, Hunter, Hunter just said we are working on putting together, uh, a way of. Consolidating all the resources that are available, you know, whether it's websites or phone numbers or links, so it's at a one-stop shop.
And to be, and to be truthful, I did interrupt you, to see a picture's one thing, but to see a person is totally different.
That's why, that's why I'd like.
An insurance company makes a decision on a sixty thousand dollar loss by looking at photos, I mean, that is, so that's why we're going to Exeter, but yes, Josh, thank you so much, we will, um. Aubrey will contact you, and thank you all for, on everything that you're trying to do.
And again, I'd like to apologize if we were a little, you know, we're just frustrated and exhausted. And that's what allows everybody else there, I'm sure.
Understood, understood.
One thing I want to say, this, this facility in Exeter, you know, you have, you have physical damage, you have property damage, but what about the damage you're facing inside? Okay?
It's, no.
I can hear it in your voice, and down at Exeter, they're gonna have somebody to talk to as well.
I've been an awful lot more drinking.
But, but psychologically, this takes a toll on everybody, just going through it, it does, so if you need help, reach out, there's help out there.
They will.
And we're sorry for your loss as well.
Well, thank you again.
Can I just piggyback on that, because I'm attached to them, like, my heart breaks for them, because they are the best neighbors ever. But, um, being attached and the fact that their house might collapse, I can barely stay in my house.
You're affected by it.
I can't sleep in my house, and so I know their house is shorted up. You know, so I am also displaced, we have lost everything that we have, them much more than me, but I just hope, you know.
And you've been in contact with the township, correct?
I have called, yes, at some time, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Dave, if I could just really quick, some of the resources that are available, that the township has shared out publicly on Facebook and other places as well, include the, uh, Electronic Recycling Center that the county offers, it's called the Burke County Solid Waste Authority. If you have damaged electronics that you need to get rid of, it's a safe place to recycle them, that's on the township website, that was just, oh, sorry, township Facebook page, that was just posted today. Um, we posted those previously as well, and it was in the newsletter, I believe, this year, um, in the spring. You know, in addition to that, the yard site is still open, um, you're able to come and dump any of the organics that you might have, brush, uh, lawn grass, different things like that, that you need to get rid of in terms of debris. Like we talked about earlier, we have the dumpsters, so we have resources, if you need them, give us a call, and we can try and point you to the direction of something else. If your situation is more intense than that, there's also resources that we did post, uh, about finding places to, um, reside for right now, if that's necessary. Um, as well as a number of other resources for food availability and things along those lines as well.
In fact, the Red Cross did offer, um, assistance too, to people that need that for both food and housing, so they got, they have, I think that's through the Exeter Township.
Right.
Red Cross has three locations, it was in the Reading Eagle today, um, we do have a lot reserved with the elementary school through Fleetwood, um, to use that lot if they are able to bring a separate facility up here, that folks would be able to go use to them. But right now, I believe there's one in Reading, there's one in Exeter, and I think in Lower Houses Township as well.
Yes, sir.
That, all information just got, uh, communicated as far as folks can ask, so it's fine.
There was one person, Aubrey had her hand raised, but she might have just been raising it to half.
Nothing.
You're good, okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
With regard to communication that people have mentioned, someone, uh, through my, my Facebook group contacted me and said, is there any way to get, like, a texting, a emergency text? I mean, I know it's not that we're gonna set up this week, but is that feasible?
We, we have the infrastructure in place already, we have switched vendors pretty recently, um, from, do you remember what the previous one was? Yeah, the new one is called Rave, um, we'll be sharing that as well, the primary use of that right now is the Boyle Water Advisory through the authority. Um, but it's something that we could apply to a situation like this, especially for the resources to be texted out to folks. Biggest problem with that is having updated numbers, so we're gonna have to push, uh, folks to try and sign up with their updated numbers, because a lot of the addresses that we have were originally pushed for, I think in two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen, sometime around there, so there's a lot of changeover. There's probably still a lot of folks who have the same information.
Where do you update your numbers?
So there is a link right now on the Water Authority's website, um, do you remember what their website is?
Way to do that on an annual basis that they're gonna utilize would be through the tax collector.
A lot of this is switched, cell phones alone.
I don't think I processed that all the way with the tax collector.
Good way to utilize, because everybody's in contact with that person annually is through the tax collector.
Are we able to gather that information from there though?
Yeah, well, the county doesn't retain phone numbers, um, for people to use, if people come and pay their tax bill in person to Tammy, they totally can get that information there. That probably represents maybe ten percent of folks' pay taxes, so.
Behooves to have something put on the mailer that goes out with our calendar, our brush cleanup and stuff like that, and just say, this is something that we're implementing, we appreciate and need all. Numbers, or provide a link that they can, like a, like a sign-up fee thing that they can use.
We're excited about it.
Right.
Yeah.
Isn't that something similar to what the school district does?
I was wondering that, the school district might actually be able to help us out with that, but that's, they're not gonna share the numbers.
No.
I think, I think, I think what we can do is put a, put an article in the next newsletter, which comes out in the fall, and we'll have that information featured there.
But like I said, uh, early, it's, it's not that it's new territory, but it's new territory of a, a magnitude of this size, so, um, but I, I agree with whoever said earlier, that it, it seems to be happening more and more frequently, and. We gotta shift to, to try to accommodate this stuff, and, and I think that we're, we, and all you are, are tired of and ready for it to be, unfortunately, not the normal, but I don't know that it's ever gonna be not the normal.
Our normal has changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other thing that I took notice of, when I first went out, because I own Southview too, Southview, uh, when a couple of the neighbors had grabbed ahold of me. And we went out and we realized some of the basements, the electric panels were submerged, everything was charged yet, the electric didn't go out. When the first, when I called Burke's Radio, I was the first, they were, uh, they told me they were tied up, they tried to have. An engine from Lyons or Virginsville they had coming in, and I met Virginsville first when they pulled up in front of my house, was just an assistant chief by himself. And when I told him about this, he had tried to get ahold of me, uh, Med Ed, to shut the, written down, and we got no response from him. He said about evacuating, and at that point, you know, I didn't know to get ahold of you guys, but for an evacuation point, if they would have to pull the people out, there was no place to go, so. Actually, Brittany Shick with, uh, Assistant Chief with, uh, Walnut Town. Right. They were setting up one at the, at their fire station, so if need be, the people could have went up there, but at that point, we didn't have anything.
I, I will say, Mike, that once it reaches that level, the county Department of Emergency Services becomes more directly involved, and they have some of the infrastructure and equipment that could free up people to be able to do that. It's kind of similar to what happened in Exeter Township, because they actually had one of their communities that was evacuated, so DES really kind of comes in and directs folks about how to, uh, go through that process. Because their full-time job is, and you already know that, but their full-time job is to plan for these events, uh, and that's where they really come in handy for when we really need to step into a situation.
And we do have an emergency management plan, just so everybody understands, there's a plan out there to deal with things like this.
Yeah. Much is, much is written by those folks too.
Right. Well, it's written by us, and it's approved by them, so. I mean, at that point, the water was still coming in, they, they couldn't start pumping anybody out because it was still, still coming in, so the biggest thing was making sure that it wasn't a deal, you know. Everybody's safe. With the electric. Human life is the most important aspect of that, that's why I had somebody come up to me and they were complaining because our guys knocked their shed over, uh, at Cornerstone. The, the whole idea was to open the roadways, because we needed to get fire apparatus in because of the two people in the, in the creek, and that was most important. You know, sheds can be rebuilt, people can't be re, relived, or brought back to life once they pass, so that was the most important aspect of this whole storm, is, is human life. Okay? So we were trying our best, we're sorry you folks had to go through that, we thank you for coming, and, and try to keep a, an open line with us, so that we can continue to at least point you in the right direction. And, and you know, if somebody has some experience in these things, we, we open the, the door for you to come in and, and say, hey, you know, if you have some ideas, ideas are always a good thing.
And I do want to, I, I'm a public caregiver, I'm not gonna make, mention names, but we, we've had outside businesses come in and, uh, that had the means, had the equipment, uh, you know, I know they came up and helped the Lyons Club out and stuff, and, you know. Me personally, I, I know the owner of that, and I'm super grateful that he was able to do that, and, uh, and there's, there's others out there, so, uh, we are very appreciative of all the help we've gotten, and, um. You know, I just, we, we, we want, the board up, up here wants you to know, you're not alone in this at all by any stretch of imagination, and we're, we're definitely no weekend.
The group's coming in too, I mean, I'm, I'm there over thirty years, and I've never seen it like that, and I know the first assistant chief that came in, words were, holy God, what?
Well, we had people from School County come down.
Yes.
Uh, I, I don't know, I, I've heard, I don't know if it was who I saw, but like I said, my, my property overlooks where those two people got taken in the river. I heard that the National Barbs is in town, so.
They were, they were actually down, down our, our street.
Right, so I mean, like, this.
Coast Guard was on, on Laurel Road.
This is, this is, yeah, this is, this is new territory.
Helicopter was up, everything, I mean, we had, we had a lot of resources in Main Creek Township on Sunday, so we weren't, we weren't forgotten.
I think a lot of us just came to get some clear direction.
Listen, this is frustrating for everybody.
With everything feeding through Facebook, and we've all been busy cleaning up and trying to get everything torn apart and cleaned up, I looked at Facebook and you see this reels and reels and reels, and it's like.
Yes.
I can't go, I can't go through fifty different messages to try and find the one that I need, like, I know. to try and find the one that I need. Like, I know I remember seeing the Exeter meetings, but I can't find it anymore. I don't even know where they are. I don't know the address. I don't know anything.
And we could probably, Eric can probably pin that to the top right now.
You know, so it's like, I think that's the frustration. We're, we need the clear direction as to where do we go now for the help? And then with that, it's great that all that feed was out there for us to look at, but after we're done, I mean, I was up at 5:00 AM till 3:00 AM in the morning trying to rip apart my basement. So, till I look at my thing, it's like, I can't sit there and read. I appreciate all that.
Well, I was shocked back then for six hours straight.
I appreciate all that. Because I love being able to see what's going on and everything.
About 150 people joined the group for Sunday.
But as far as it is now, it's too much to go through trying to find...
Well, if FEMA comes out, they'll put, they'll put something here to help you deal with it locally, or at little least meet with you here in the township. They will actually come here and set up a trailer if they have to. So, they try to meet you where your damages are most prevalent. So, as, like I said, I can't guarantee anything.
So, are you gonna keep updating the township website, or keep updating the township Facebook page, or where are you gonna keep updating? What is the consistent thing that's gonna keep getting updated?
I'm gonna say all the way.
Yeah.
And they have this. They have this. So, you know, I think part of that is also your desire to update the website to be more user-friendly and to be more clear about where you go for information like that. And I think that's some of the things that we're putting together.
We've already approved a new website, just so you know. We've approved changing who we're dealing with now, because we just went through a period where we were down for three months, and that's unacceptable.
Yes. And the website for the authority, and it's right on their front page, that you can sign up for this RAV 911 service, which is where they'll give you the texts or the phone calls if there's something wrong, is mainicreektpwpauthority.org. So, you can do that now if you want.
Okay. So, anybody else have any comments? Yes, sir.
Hi, Bob Schneider, Longleaf Drive. I just wanna offer my sympathy to everyone who's suffering much greater situation than I am. In April, I submitted plans to have a porch built to, on the back of my house. I was informed that the setback wasn't efficient. I'd been communicating with Hunter, and he said that a similar resident, or another resident is facing a similar issue, and that the zoning board's gonna meet in the fall. And I just wanted to make sure that my concern isn't forgotten and that it's addressed when the board meets.
You have that on the list?
Yes. And you, this might be the first time you guys are directly hearing about it. So, basically, he has a porch that already exists at the back of his property.
Is this a temporary one?
Oh, you don't...
It's not a patio.
Sorry, patio. So, he has a patio outside of his backyard, and he would like to build a permanent awning to be able to extend.
Do you have a windout now?
Yeah, I have one of those.
Yeah. Under our current zoning regulations, when you do an awning that's attached to the home, that becomes a structural change, and that doesn't meet the setback requirements at that property. He backs up onto the property that the township owns. That's part of what's been thought about for Onlin Heights Park in a later phase. But I think my conversations with Mike Rohr, our township zoning officer, and with Tom, kind of in the loop there as well, that making a change to allow to just do an awning or something that isn't enclosed by four walls or something to that degree is probably acceptable, especially with the way that the development was constructed. Mike had proposed some language. We have to tinker just to make sure the planning commission's okay and that you guys are okay with it, but it's a pretty simple change.
To that end, I just wanted to correct what you said, make sure we're on the same page. You said zoning hearing board will consider us, which is why I perked up. This isn't not a zoning hearing board issue, it's a planning commission issue.
I understand. You encouraged me to, you know, tinker this.
The planning commission, not the zoning hearing board. Zoning hearing, unless you file an application, you're not gonna be heard by the zoning board, so...
It's just a technical detail.
Yeah. I don't want you to show up to the right meeting. It was my concern. Not that you're wrong, I just wanted to make sure you're to the right.
And I might not specify what report it was in, but I know what you're talking about, and you're talking about the zoning change.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have some drawings here and stuff.
That probably wouldn't be best for us to do.
Planning commission.
We have, are they the same ones that you submitted with the building permit? We have. Yeah. I can take them if you want us to have them again, but, you know, whatever the case.
Thank you.
Pleasure to be here as well.
Anybody else? All right. So, we're gonna move on with our meeting. Sorry we took a little bit longer tonight, but I think it was necessary. There's a lot of people suffering a lot, and I wanted to at least have them over here. So, thank you all for coming, and I wish you all the very best. Northern Burke's Police, take her away, Chief.
So, the activity report for June, oh, where are we going? It's like breaking news, more than just getting news. So, the activity report for June 2023. I'll just go over the Mainic Creek numbers so we can get through this. Calls for service for the month were 658. 338 of those calls were for Mainic Creek Township. Citations issued for the month were 174. 86 of those were for Mainic Creek. There were 155 traffic warnings given. 72 of those were for Mainic Creek. Vehicle stops, 277. 137 of those were for Mainic Creek. There were seven arrests. Two of those were for Mainic Creek. Crashes, there were a total of 37. 14 of those are for Mainic Creek. And the officers put on 4,884 miles in Mainic Creek on their vehicles with 939.3, I'm sorry, 8 month hours and 31.3 day hours. So, that's the activity report for Mainic Creek Township. Some new items, some other items. Our officers have all received their new handguns. They've all been trained with them and qualified with them, so now they've all been deployed. They, I've seen the shooting scores come up dramatically with the new handguns, with the red dot. So, I think that was a good move. Obviously, one of our officers will be able to be more aggressive as possible with the firearm. The vehicles, the two new vehicles, they're currently being outfitted, so they're getting the cages put in the light system, all the outfitting that the factory doesn't, that doesn't put in the vehicles. And we should have them shortly, won't have them for National Night Out, but we should have them shortly, and then we have to get them decal so that people know their police cars. We're scheduled to interview us for new hires, to hire our two new officers. They're scheduled for next week, and then hoping that we can get through all of that to have them actually hired in late August, early September, have them working. Promotions for two corporal positions, I'm expecting to have those completed September to October, have our selection made, and have those guys promoted and start getting additional training as corporals. One thing that had been mentioned before was, people feel that we don't report all the crimes that happen. And there's, first of all, all the crimes that happen in our area, you can go on our website, and there's under Resources at the top. You click on that, and you go towards the bottom. There's crime mapping available for both Android, iPhone, and just regular Windows-based operating systems. And you can, Pennsylvania, Northern Burke comes up, you can put the time range you want in there, and it shows you what's going on in the township. The police's job isn't to be the reporters of everything that's going on. If there's a significant situation where we feel that people's lives are in jeopardy, or there's harm that could come to them, we will let you know. But when things happen, and then people hear rumors about it, and why weren't we told? Because telling people for not, not a good reason is just, it's gonna cause a lot of problems. Number one, if it's an ongoing investigation, we can't release that stuff, because when we do make an arrest, depending on what's been leaked out, we could lose the case based on some loose lips. Loose lips sink ships, right? The other thing is, in some cases, it can cause complete mayhem. Like, I think we've seen a year or so ago, when somebody went and reported something on Facebook first, and then reported it to us, and then FMZ made a big, huge deal out of it, and blew, totally blew out of proportion, only it was afraid that, you know, something was gonna happen. It was, the media is there to sell advertising, and they like hysteria. We don't want hysteria. Hysteria's bad for everyone, right? So, we're not gonna tell everyone every little thing that's going on. Plus, it's, there's privacy. If it's you, you know, I don't, I'm not gonna say, oh, your house was domestic, you beat up your wife again, or your house, you beat your kid. Like, that's information that the public doesn't need to have and shouldn't have, right? So, we don't report every little thing that happens. But if you go on crime mapping through our website, you'll see that, that the things are reported. You're not gonna get any information, because it's kind of on a need-to-know basis. So, you'll, so you can see the crimes that came in, but it's not, you're not gonna have maybe all the little details that everybody thinks that they need to have, they don't need to have those details. So, I just wanted to set that record straight, because I understand that there was somebody at the last meeting who was kind of concerned about that. So, if there's a, if there's an immediate danger to the public, trust me, we'll, we will let you know. But that's not in the case in the two incidents that I am referring to. So, and they're both in Mainic Creek Township.
One thing I want to add to that is, we have National Night Out coming out August 1st. We invite everybody to come out, and we're gonna be at the Scoopole Valley School District Campus. There's gonna be food and, and other vendors there. It's a free event.
Totally free.
Won't be any alcohol.
Yeah, no alcohol allowed.
Clarify. But there will be other things there. Police will be there. There are five agencies involved this year. We have Hamburg, Tilden Township, Burn Township, our department, Fleetwood Borough. Our fire companies are gonna be there, ambulances. So, Sheriff's Department's coming out.
Game Commission, National Guard.
Yep.
It's the biggest one today.
Right, it'll be the biggest one.
I believe some helicopters coming through.
We're trying to get some helicopters. Obviously, they're in peak demand.
That's up in the air right now.
It costs a lot of money just to fire them up, so it has to pull some strings to get that to happen, but...
A lot of hard work went into it, and I haven't been able to get to the meeting before I'm here. It's gonna be awesome. It's probably the biggest one we, well, it is the biggest one we've had yet, so...
And there will be fireworks at the end of it all.
Yes, there's always fireworks. If it gets any bigger, we're gonna need to find, seriously, we need to find a venue, because we are, at the point where we're running out of space.
The county.
And, and we're gonna have to hire somebody just to plan that, because Alicia's putting a lot of the police stuff that she's supposed to do off to the side, just to be able to do all the National Night Out.
For those of you that don't know, Alicia is your office administrator, so, and yeah, she's been working hard to do it.
I think we have one more meeting.
Right. One more meeting. If anyone wants to volunteer, or knows anyone who wants to volunteer, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, you know, any organizations, sports teams, I know my daughter going through college, she needed to have so many hours for volunteering hours. Reach out to the, to the department, 926-2999. That goes right to Alicia. And we can, we can get something signed up. That's probably the biggest thing we need right now. We've been very fortunate to have some very nice monetary donations from a lot of the businesses around here. And like you said, everything's free. Like, you're, they're not allowed to sell you anything. Like, you don't pay for anything. You walk in there, food, everything's free. So, that's all through donations. But the biggest thing I think we need right now are volunteers to help, to help take like water and ice around the building.
Parking, in the event that there's a lot of rain prior to it, and we can't use their front yard for a parking lot, we're gonna possibly, it's Eschman, I believe.
Looking at these buses, Eschman.
We're gonna have shuttle buses, so we'll need people to sort of coordinate that. Unfortunately, you won't be at the event.
Right.
So, you sort of...
But it's right inside.
Right to the front door of the event.
It's right inside, so it's not like you can reschedule it. This is the date, and that's kinda it.
So, you're all invited?
Yes.
Take advantage of it, the fireworks alone.
It's a blast.
I think we might.
I didn't even, no, I didn't mean that.
It's a poor idea.
No.
I thought you were one of them.
That was totally unintended.
It's all up in the air, isn't it?
I think it stopped now.
A lot of the signs that we posted, I'm sure have, or I apologize if they're in yards or whatever. Obviously, we didn't know it was coming, so a lot of our signs are gone, but hopefully people saw them beforehand. And, and once again, too, I also wanna give my sympathy for those who are out with some substantial losses. It was crazy, I was out in it. I've pretty much lived in Mainic Creek Township most, like 95% of my adult life, my entire life, and I've never seen, even Hurricane Agnes, I've never seen water like it was on Sunday. So, there's some things that just can't, can't be planned for, and I think that's one of them. The Willow Creek looked like the Scoopole River, moving just as fast and 100 yards wide, and it's a little creek that was crazy. And everyone did a fantastic job. Our, we had two officers who went in, they were up to their, up to their chests deep trying to rescue people in the, in the water. And one of the, I think the biggest things that really, really pulled unnecessary resources from everyone were the people driving around, driving around barricades, saw that firsthand.
Oh, my God.
Walking around barricades. Barricades are there for your, your safety, you know? So, we had to take, so, so some of our fire engines couldn't get to pump out basements, because people abandoned their cars in the middle of the street, and they couldn't get past them until they were towed. Or they couldn't get, you know, other things, you know, cars then wound up going around barricades and becoming submerged in water, so then they had to react to those calls, and that delayed them even further, going to houses and trying to stem things there. It just, it was, it was the entire county. Firefighters couldn't even use their radio. They had to go to side radio channels, because they just couldn't get on the air. It was constant. It was, I've never seen anything like it. It was, it was ridiculous. But I'm hoping maybe, maybe there's some kind of relief, whether it be financially or whatever, through maybe church groups, maybe GoFundMe pages or something, but to hear that an insurance company isn't going to do anything for the people that we're talking to. That's just heartbreaking. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Okay. Engineer report.
Okay. July 13th, engineers agenda and reports. Under action items, the first item, it's not an action item, was the stormwater ordinance that was mentioned. The draft is prepared and is ready to be reviewed with the planning commission. And I'm gonna have a summary provided showing what this ordinance does up and beyond the state ordinance that this is modeled after, so you can have a little bit of more comfort feeling of what areas we're addressing to try and address some of these problems. And then we can discuss if there's even further areas that we want to try and beef up or do something about.
That would be very helpful to have that summary.
And just to clarify, the state, the state requirement, state ordinance is a hundred year storm, a hundred year flood.
Correct.
So, so part of the reason is that we're looking at this, we wanna take it above longer year storm in case that there's an issue. So, I think that's a great thing to do, is get them involved, and, you know, we need to make a revision. It's, it's very clear, we need to make a revision to this, so, thank you.
All right.
Real quick, Tom.
Yeah.
Eric, do we need to advertise this for two meetings like we do for zoning?
Like, don't believe so.
Okay, so then...
Standard ones, then yes, it's a seven. Seven, seven days ahead of time.
We have, our report to the state due in September, so this will need to be passed by the PC at their August meeting, and then hopefully we can just turn it around pretty quick, so you guys can take a look at August, and then if you're not comfortable with, you know, that quick turnaround, then you can approve in September before our report is due, I believe the 15th of September for the MS4 report. So, we do have a little bit of a time crunch, but I think...
Put PC in, in July, and then four to five...
Uh, August, because they don't have a meeting July.
How much time in between?
Um...
You just gotta advertise seven days.
No, it's like...
By now's time.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, yeah, make sure.
We're doing...
Yeah.
Especially when...
Especially when it's possible.
Well, September, September meeting will be fine.
Yes, September meeting will be before the 15th deadline. A day before the 15th deadline. We will have one part that will be waiting for upload.
Not, not till Monday. We have several meetings scheduled on other topics.
Yeah.
I know, I know.
We're here anyway.
Three, four days a week, so...
We're here anyway.
Yeah, I know.
So, if we push, go to Shelby, and you really need it, we can piggyback and maybe start one of those meetings at six or something like that, before the 6:30 meetings for the conditional use hearings.
That's what it's supposed to be.
Just, just so, you have options.
Yep.
Okay. And we're all, we're all there anyway.
Sorry to pin you off. Sorry to pin you off.
Yeah, you're good. Discussion on the escrow release, this was dealing with vendors, request for their reduction in their letter of credit. We have a punch list of items for them to address. We say need to get their HOP closed out from the state. So we're not going to have an escrow release for tonight's meeting.
Okay. Is that the only thing they're waiting for?
There was a couple of items that we had on a punch list that they have to address. Not too much.
Okay.
They did a pretty nice job. On the engineer's agenda, all the normal items are addressed. Subdivision review status checklist, all the plans are current. Attached is the activity report for zoning and code enforcement. I did provide everyone with the SEO report, like, I wasn't ready for that one out. That's everything. Any questions?
I don't know, I think I talked to you enough this week so far.
You guys have time to walk around together.
We were wet this morning. It was tough to move, drenched.
See, now you're all dried up in this township.
It wasn't, it wasn't recurring water either, it was ninety-five degrees.
We're in jeans and.
Been fishing a phone.
Did you have a drop call?
Subdivision review.
Just that we, we had the, I believe it was the tenth conditional use hearing earlier this week. The next two are scheduled for July twenty-fourth and August eighth at six-thirty in this room. If we haven't done it yet, we will be circulating dates. I think we're trying to work with some of the consultants before we give you dates. We've gotta, and fine tune the available dates. So we're, we're gonna circulate those dates to try and schedule a second August date and two September dates with the hope that we don't need them, but I'd rather have them scheduled so that we, we have time to reserve.
Instead of dates, can we go to raises?
Yeah, should. That's all I have.
It's getting too vague.
We have managers.
That's all, that's all I have.
He said he was done.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, manager, how we work?
So in line with previous discussions around moving our bank accounts to Tompkins and Pliggett away from two other depositories, those two would be Truist and Mid Penn. This would do work in consolidating our bank accounts, but also achieving higher interest rates for our funds that are not being actively used month to month. So I think that what we're recommending at this point is to maintain our funds that we have with Pliggett and then move all of our other funds over to Tompkins into what they're calling a sweep-in option, which has us sweeping in all of our funds every day into a money market account that achieves about a four percent interest rate.
But allows us to withdraw as we need.
Yes, yeah, so it, we won't, from what they described it, we won't really see a difference except for on our reports, when they give us a monthly report. It'll be like, it'll look more like our Pliggett account does for how we achieve interest on the gross assets.
It's really a nice program. Thank you for checking into it. Because now that interest rates have moved up, we get interest on our balances without having to have them in a higher interest savings account or a CD or something like that. It's a nice feature. And then also, I noticed the auditor signed off on it. And we had a meeting with Tompkins, which indicated that all those funds are guaranteed through state-by-state law. So there's no risk to the township for doing it, so I think it's a great idea.
My point two, this year we budgeted four thousand dollars in interest. And we're at twenty-four thousand this year, just because of the way that interest has moved. And it's also, it's hard to predict how interest rates will move, but, you know, it's a significant addition to the township's budget that we achieve these.
But everything is still protected?
Yes.
By state law, state law, our mandates actually that the banks guarantee our funds of all municipalities, like a school district, so, whatever else that we're doing. So do you need a motion?
I, I don't, I don't, it's gonna parlay into this motion here. I don't necessarily have a problem with it. My concern is, what's the impact gonna be on you right now with everything we got going on with the flood? Is this like prioritizing work? I mean, I, I get it, it should happen. If we're gonna do it, it should happen. Is it, is this gonna?
So we would need to likely wait until August until we get our final interest payment for a CD that's with Mid Penn Bank. Because then we don't miss out on the interest that we worked to achieve.
Of course.
Tompkins does a big portion of it and there's paperwork that I need to fill out. I mean, it will be another thing. I, I will, there's, there's really no way that I could say I won't.
So if we prove it now, you can do it as you would. You can do it as.
Yeah, yeah. I think the biggest part will be getting signature cards. I don't know that any of you will have to physically appear, but you'll need to come in and give me your driver's license.
But they have ours on record already for Tompkins.
For the new accounts they're gonna need.
They want some. It's best combined.
So that'll be a part of it.
That's fine. I said, go ahead, that's fine. You want, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we authorize a township manager to start the process to close accounts with Mid Penn and Truist and transfer the funds to Tompkins.
I'll second that motion.
On agreement?
Aye. Just prioritize this first before you do that.
Okay, updates on two thousand twenty-three roadwork.
Tom, do you wanna take the one for the?
Onalony Heights is complete. And East Westerner Road was also completed, so the contract with HK is complete.
They did a nice job.
I thought you were very pleased with it, yes.
Yeah.
I, I do think we're a little bit under the.
We, we got a lot of compliments too from residents that HK was super accommodating with letting them out of driveways and everything like that, so. I do need to talk to you about another road thing, but that's fine.
We have one piece left for West Shore Drive, completing that. That has been significantly delayed due to the road crews work elsewhere related to the flood. We do anticipate completing that by this year before the road work season ends.
Okay, do you remember who did the backside of the lake?
AMS.
Who was it?
AMS.
AMS, who's AMS?
Asphalt.
Asphalt maintenance solutions.
Okay, because I guess you're here tonight and I, I took a ride with Scott Monday night after our police meeting. And I am pretty sure that we don't ever wanna consider the same type of road service that we did back there.
In the oil and chip.
Yeah.
I, I tend to agree with that. It doesn't give you a nice.
Did anybody use the words like very happy with the work that was done, like you just used for?
I think you know the answer to that.
Last year when they got finished with the work track behind the lake, like you just used for the work that was done on Austrian Drive and stuff? Because if you did, I question your integrity. Because we, that, that was the most horrible roadwork I think I have ever seen done anywhere, ever. We were so lucky that we got away with basically no winter last year. You already had to do cold patching less than a month and a half after the work was completed on the center of that road. After that was tarred, less than a month and a half after that was. And I, that, those roads, and I'm not even talking about the road I live on. Not talking about it. I'm talking about Ridge Road from West Water Tree Drive to Cammerer. And Cammerer Road from Ridge. Cammerer should be done the whole way. I'll just go up to the top of the hill to Burke. Just that, those two sections, right there. You have two drainage culverts there where the, where the house burnt down after the S-turn at the bridge. But the water doesn't even run into drainage culverts. I mean, not even close. The drainage culverts are a foot and a half higher than the water runs on the side of the road there. And at the top of Cammerer Road, where we, they put the drainage culvert in where Burke intersects with Cammerer Road, they put that drainage culvert in, the guys put that in last year. It took about, I don't know, it took them a couple of months because they had other projects they were doing in between, trying to scramble and get part of the roads done that the township did before they came and did the oil and chipping. The water still doesn't run into that culvert to this day. And I, I, these guys were scrambling so hard to try to get that work done before they came because all of a sudden, we went from doing a couple of roads to oil and chipping the whole thing back there. I mean, we were gonna do those roads three years ago, then all of a sudden, all the money went to Excelsior Drive. Then they were gonna do the roads back there two years ago, then all of a sudden, that got switched and we did everything at treetops. And then we were gonna do a couple of the roads back there and then because of the oil prices and everything, I remember that, and then it got changed to oil and chipping everything back there. And now, now I asked for what roads and I see Hunter sent me a graph today and I haven't really had a chance to review and judge about what he sent me. And I, now my wife's showing me on Facebook how happy everybody is about the roadwork that was being done in Onalony Heights. I'm like, hell, the roads in Onalony Heights are being done? Those are still smooth as a baby's rear end compared to what, you know, what do the residents get? When the township re-does a road, what do the residents get? The residents get a smooth drive. When you redo East Westerner Road or West Westerner Road or any other road, the residents get a smooth road. The township gets the benefit of the road crew not to do, not to do crack sealing anymore and some of those little nuisance things that cost us all money and their time. I get that, but the residents get a smooth drive. I'll put anybody in my pickup truck anytime that they want to and take them for a smooth drive on roads that were just redone last year, theoretically. I, I want, I want, and so does everybody behind the lake. We want those roads put back on the front of the list for next year, is what we, is what we want. And, and to be done correctly, and only a few roads to be done correctly rather than trying to stretch it all out and then be finished with the back of the lake for quite a while. Is, is really what, what we're after. And I would really like for that to be, and I know it's gonna be expensive to do them because it's not so simple as going and putting a half-inch asphalt on, on those roads back there. We know it. But Burke Road is no different in Perry Township than it is in Maiden Creek Township. They weren't built at different times, back in the eighteen hundreds, whenever, you know, whenever. But if you drive Burke Road in Perry Township as smooth as a baby's rear end and you hit it in Maiden Creek Township, you can tell the difference. And they haven't, and Maiden, I went, I went to the Perry Township and walked in there and asked them when the last time they was they did any maintenance on, on Burke, their portion of Burke Road. It's been at least nine years.
So.
So please, please, we wasted our money back there.
I honestly don't disagree. They've been back there plenty of times.
Just to put a financial number, if we did it at a leveling course this year, we're probably looking at somewhere between three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars.
It's a big number.
Yep. And that's just for chip seal, which is a grade above oil and chip. If we were to do it paving, all of that work, you're looking at a number of probably four times that.
Well, it's easy over a million dollars to do that. Easy.
But is there gonna be some reclamation work that's necessary to, to deal with?
I don't think you'd have any pumping in or any major work as far as the base goes other than maybe some work to get inlets at the, if there's a problem with inlets, I would look at that. But I don't think there's a lot of base repair type work.
And it wouldn't really need to be milled hard and just, just a scratch coat and then.
Wear a coat. Wear a coat.
Now, and I, I know Scott, you've probably thought about this as well with that kind of request. That will significantly delay other work that you have scheduled for developments that are, you know, just as needed.
Well.
And I'm not.
They're not scheduled.
That, fair.
They're, they're in the spreadsheet of things that would be nice to do, but they're not scheduled work.
I, I understand. I think my point is that if you guys wanted to do this, something else falls off the list.
Right, and I'm gonna kick it back to where I said at previous meetings, that there were roads that needed to be done ahead of things, ahead of all the roads.
Right, well, I, I looked at your, and I would like to sit down with you and see your tentative list. And I know because, and the only reason I was, part of the reason I was bringing this up was your township newsletter, the cover of the township newsletter, is you were all exploring options about, it was all about roads.
Yep.
You were all exploring options about funding sources and, and taking a look at, at doing roads. And I'm all in favor of that because, you know, the only money the township really spends on redoing roads every year, and historically has been the case, is the liquid fuels tax money from the state. We don't budget. We spend money on roads, in the township road crew, obviously. We authorize fifty thousand here, fifty thousand there to do significant things that the road crew does. But really for redoing, repaving roads, it's normally the liquid fuels tax stuff. But, you know, and, and as I talked with Dave the other night, that gets expensive, real, real expensive, real fast. And, and I recognize that fact, but we made a mistake back there. Somebody made a mistake back there. Or there was a series of mistakes gotten made and, and they're expensive, and I know it. But that is the detour there. And I think we are underestimating the amount of traffic that is on that road. Every spring, there's two ten-wheelers that haul fifty loads of top of mushroom soil for four and a half weeks, from quarter after six in the morning until noon. Two ten-wheelers from right over here in Blanden go to one of those fields over there. And the, the two of them almost hit when they're running opposite directions. And now that that organic farm on Cammerer Road is really taking off, there's tractor trailers and stuff running that, that weren't running that road six, seven years ago. There's a lot of, there's a lot of truck activity back there that there wasn't even five years ago. And I'm surprised at that, I really am.
We do have, I just answered that. I mean, we do have a lot of developments that were built, I think, in the eighties and nineties, that there's a lot of roads that are deteriorating. I mean, if you just go to the post office, that section of East Westerner there is terrible.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's totally alligator to the point of it's, it's really, really bad. And there's other.
And they catch those edges, exactly.
Well, that, but that whole road is just really, really bad. And then we've identified, I mean, well, what, it's two to three million dollars worth of roadwork that we need to do for township roads in the next twenty, ten years or less.
Agreed.
Your number's a little bit low, but I.
Okay, but I forget, I don't have in front of me, I'm saying, you know, three million, whatever, three million dollars.
But when I drive those roads and I look at the ones that are on the list for the next couple of years and I compare them to driving the roads, Ridge and Cammerer, Ridge and Cammerer need work today a lot worse than those do. The ones that you're looking at doing on his list for the next two, three years.
Well, I, I take your point and I'm not necessarily disagreeing with your conclusion, but the deterioration of roads is more often, you can't see it until it's already happened. So that's one of the things that we're trying to prevent as well. Because if, if you look in the road report, it's like a graph like this, where you gradually go down and then you quickly go down. And that's what we're trying to prevent, that point where we quickly go down because the cost to bring the road back at that point is much more expensive. But I, I take your conclusion that you're making.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll look at that.
I think we, right out of the gate, I think we need to take a look at the store.
Well, yeah, storm drains are gonna be a big thing.
If I, if I can add something to the storm drain, this is something that Keith and I had talked about. Yeah, hopefully not planes. Keith and I had talked about this previously and we were allocating more money moving forward so that they could continue to replace and repair storm drains more often and be able to do all of the ones within any development that you guys would approve road work for. Because in Onalani Heights, that was one of the things that we actually increased money this year to be able to do is replace all of those drains.
And we've done that before the road work, so we're in good shape there.
Yeah, so that, that was a lot of Keith being forward, thinking about how we wanted to make sure that we were getting all of our facilities, not just, not just the road work. And that's also to you guys for a period of months to do that.
We've done the same thing at Treetops.
Yeah.
I wanna, I wanna bring up something that Scott didn't mention though too is that our guys did go in there, widen the roads and, and I know the farmers back there are appreciative of it being wider, so you did mention that, but you didn't mention it here, so I just wanted to pass that on to, to these guys.
I'm sorry.
So they are appreciative that it's definitely wider and that was our, our guys, our team did that, so.
And to, and to the point that I was making, I think it's the process that we use this time that might not be giving us that road surface, but now that doesn't take away the bumps that we went through the other night just driving on the straightaways where the potholes interrupted. So I'm thinking that, that what we were thinking we were gonna get out of that road surface wasn't what we actually ended up with. So maybe we need to readjust our way of thinking on how we make roads last and maybe if there are some new processes that we can use, that might be our, our way to go forward. And it might cut down or extend your, your timeline from fifteen years to twenty-five, but if we're making the roads better instead of just fixing them and making them temporary, I think that's what we wanna,
Yeah.
what we wanna look at.
That's funny because oil and chip usually works pretty good.
This is bad.
Yeah, I know.
It's unclear.
It usually works pretty good.
It's unclear.
The way you did it.
Maybe it's an application.
Yeah. And, and that's what I was wondering, was it the application? Was it raining when they were putting it down? I don't even remember. So there could be any number of things that happen. I don't know if you, do you remember anything about back then or? No, yeah, it's.
I think some of the issues when they were switching trucks out and stuff, that when the drag box was getting in and then they refill, that's where you get a lot of the. A lot of use of the humps and stuff, but.
Yeah, that's some of the humps. The transitions are gonna be some of your humps.
But I think some of it was the contractor that came back as well.
That don't account for the road coming apart.
Yeah. That's the surface or the, the use of the surface.
That's wrong.
So.
Our, our poor guys were scrambling trying to get done because all of a sudden, these guys were coming in.
Yeah. And they went over top of what our guys did.
Mm-hmm.
So what our guys did wasn't the effect.
Our guys were scrambling.
Yeah. So.
I think, I think it really comes back to, you know, the money point that we made earlier.
Right.
Heidi, the one that you were referencing, it's seven point five million dollars over fifteen years, three point five million dollars in the first five.
Okay.
So.
Thank you for the clarification.
That's, that's if the board wants to keep to that schedule, because it is your right to depart from it.
But it's based on the quality of the, or the condition of the roads too.
Yes.
That you identified in that, in those dollars.
We just wanna bring our quality of road.
Because it's a lot in the poor condition.
Yeah.
Technically.
Yeah, because, because some roads that are farther degraded or farther deteriorated need more material and, and base repairing, different things along those lines to bring it back up to a, a usable condition or a better condition, I should say. So it, it costs more to bring farther gone brands.
Well, and that's exactly the point. You don't wanna lose the base on a road because it typically doubles your cost when you get down.
Well, we wanna look at the road infrastructure again this year just to take a look and, and see what we would have to do and the costs and, and definitely the drainage is, is an issue.
Well, to give you an estimate, I could do that.
Well, I'd rather, I'd rather know the numbers and, and be able to know what we're talking about when we go through.
Yeah.
How's that sound?
I don't mean the.
Yeah, no, no.
I'm sorry.
No, that's, I just wanna know the, the facts to it and then we could make the decisions
Yeah.
based on the information that we have.
Do you want me to move the next one?
Yeah, resolution.
Yeah.
So this is resolution twenty-five, twenty-three. It would replace resolution twelve dash twenty-three, which is a comprehensive fee schedule. We wanted to make some adjustments for some of the permit fees and then also to add a new classification for road closure permits and to add a facility installation fee for when contractors in the midst of a street access permit are installing a facility. So that's like a pedestal, a connection box, something along those lines because they're using public infrastructure to be able to put something for commercial use into the right of way. So that's what the first part does. Second part is the Parks and Rec Board had worked towards some fee changes to try and make our costs a little bit more competitive for the use of our parks, especially community park and especially for some of the seasonal costs. And their recommended fees are here as well on the one that you got this evening. So I can go in those in more detail. I'm sure Eric can talk a little bit about some of the philosophy for the parks ones if you have questions about it. But it's all pretty standard.
Let's just bring it up to.
I got a question around the gate.
Go ahead.
You're talking about gates.
The athletic field, field usage with lights per day. Where does that apply?
Land. Not playing the bulk land involved.
Not ours?
Softball.
Oh.
It's not just community park.
Okay, I'm just trying, you're right, I forgot.
We have a whole bunch of parks.
Because we say that, that, that's never happening at community parks, so I'm just like, okay.
You just brought that oyster.
You're good. I forgot that. Thank you.
I thought you were gonna question something else. That has a three in front of it.
No.
Any questions?
I don't think so.
Sorry. I was just gonna make a motion to adopt the resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two, twenty-three, which is a resolution establishing comprehensive fee schedule including permits, plan review and for establishment of miscellaneous needs.
Before that, I wanted a question though. Is there, is there, is a, I know they're band this, but is there a deposit that say someone's in there and they completely trashed the place? Is there a cleanup?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we just got this tonight, so.
This, this one you approved at the beginning of.
Mother Nature played over there. She get to pay the penalty.
Oh, I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, on agreement?
Bye.
Bye.
Strategic planning workshop meeting. If you say another meeting this month.
August first.
I have a feeling we're gonna be full.
I think Eric Fry needs to move to Maiden Creek Township.
He's a cop.
It's been three, four nights in, at a week right now.
We have cons here.
Spend more nights here than with my wife.
We also have a cemetery here. So if you're dead tired.
It doesn't even matter.
I think I've talked to some of you guys. I think your expectations may be a little bit different than mine and I wanna cater my expectations to what the board would like. So I guess part of what I'm looking for is some direction about how you want things communicated to the public. We'll have all of our internal materials ready by the thirty-first of July. How do we change some of this process to accommodate some of these creek issues? You know, because I can begin to pull together what those costs would be, but the number that you guys are already looking at is quickly going to increase if you want me to begin looking at some of those. And I'm not saying that because I don't want to.
At zoning, land development, we need to look at the maps, we need to look at the whole, the whole, the whole ballgame. Because one thing leans on the other, so it's not gonna be something we can put together real quick because it's gonna be affected by a lot of things.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna have, I'm sure, a lot of pushback on quite a bit of it.
Potentially.
So, I mean, people have property now and, and they bought it with the intent of using it to a certain purpose. And if we're adjusting those purposes, I'm sure we're gonna have the pushback. So, you know, we wanna, we wanna take the proper steps instead of making a rush into it, but we need to move forward with some, some serious thought so that we can make these changes within the next year. And Tom, is that a reasonable expectation?
Are you talking about comp plan?
Yes.
Well.
Well, comp.
There's a lot that I guess.
I mean, this, I, I was thinking more budget. You know, I don't disagree with what you were talking about. So, and that's fine. I mean, if, if, if the board wants to think about some of the strategies that support where you would spend money, I think that's a totally worthy start too. So I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to get understanding of how you wanna start.
I think that will parlay into the budget if we figure out.
Changes if necessary.
Right. We might have to adjust where money's go. So. If you know, we'll figure that out first before we go through dollar amounts.
So we're gonna need a few meetings to do that and we're gonna need to pull a team together to be able to, to dredge through it because we're gonna need some outside support. We're gonna need the financial aspect of it. We're gonna need the.
Technical aspect of it.
So we gotta start.
Yeah.
It's just not this month.
Well, I, I don't, I think when we had talked about this the last time, we were talking about a date in September.
And that would be much more comfortable.
Yeah, but, but I think what you're talking about too requires a lot of our work to undergird and prepare for that meeting so that you guys have information necessary for the strategy. And I can tell you that will take at least a month. So I guess.
We're going into budget anyway, so, so parlaying one into the other is gonna be, is probably gonna be what we need to do as, as a comprehensive event. So we're gonna spend a couple of nights at that.
Depending on how comprehensive you're talking, you're gonna spend a year, two years at that.
It's gonna take that long.
Because the last comprehensive plan we did, we spent, I think it was two or three years.
Oh, yeah.
Together.
Yeah.
And that's what, you were talking, all those ordinance before, you said within a year, there's no comp plan.
Yeah.
Land development.
Oh, we're not gonna be able to have that all in place, but we're gonna have an idea where we're going then. That'll just be our plan.
We need to brainstorm exactly.
Oh, you're, you're just looking for directions.
Yes. Yeah, because we can't put it together and, and have it operational in a year.
That's right.
No, no, that's not gonna happen. But I'm just saying for you, you're saying it's not something we can do, but we need to start, so. But we're still doing hearings twice a, twice a month and.
And you're interviewing police candidates.
Yeah, so there's a lot going on. And I can't do an eighth day this week.
Yeah.
Too bad.
I know. I kept wondering about that. So, so if you wanna work on those projects to try to get numbers, but right now, the primary thing is, is dealing with this flood stuff, this.
Well, I guess, what I'm. What I'm trying to understand is do you wanna hold a meeting in September?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay. Do you want the agenda of that meeting to be some of these ordinance changes and, you know, how we can come up with some recommendations for that? Or do you want it to be budget? Do you want them to be intermixed?
I think they have to be intermixed.
Okay.
Because one's gonna count on the other.
Okay.
Otherwise, none of it's gonna happen.
So that, that's doable.
Yeah.
When do you want us to share information with the public?
Well, I think we have to brainstorm what we're doing first and come up with a, a generic idea or a graph to, to be able to go by.
Okay.
And these are public meetings.
Yeah.
So what I would get from that is you wouldn't have.
Executive decisions.
Well, you, you wouldn't have materials like you are getting out of the line. It would be a lot like this.
Sure.
The board would have these materials, the folks would get a presentation. Do you like the concept of doing a pre-recorded Zoom meeting so that people can see that ahead of time? Do you just wanna do stuff here?
We could just do it here.
Yeah.
Just, just.
That way, the questions are gonna be able to come right away.
Because people are gonna have.
We can answer.
Okay.
And then we're gonna have questions too, I'm sure.
Okay.
So probably looking at what, mid-September. We wanna wait till after school starts because there's gonna be a lot of people that aren't gonna be all make it as they get ready for, for school, college and things like that, so.
And then after our regular township meeting and, I don't know if we're gonna have more. Where our house.
I'm trying to find out how many boards.
Because that's another priority that we gotta get through too.
Yeah. Hopefully that's not a drain on forever.
Good.
You have your answer? Do you have the answer you want or the answer that?
I have the answer you guys want, I think.
That's right. That sounds good.
I, I think I know how to move forward. I will call and ask if I need some more.
Okay.
Plan a meeting.
Yes.
So you have three vacancies right now. Well, you.
We have two right now. We'll have three at the end of the meeting.
You're right, you're right.
Wow.
No, I'm not talking about that one.
Okay.
You have an alternate for your zoning hearing board, you have a planning commission vacancy and you will have at the end of the meeting, a vacancy for the township authority. For the planning commission, you have two applicants. I think both would do fine. And with the new vacancy you have later tonight, you know, you could have a couple of options. You could appoint both of them this evening to different positions. You could hold interviews, you could see more applications. The zoning hearing board alternate is not a need to, it's a prefer to.
Nice to have.
Yeah, yeah. So you could go out for more applications. In one conversation I had with Josh, you kind of put me down the thought of with how much has happened, you probably have more interest right now in how do I get involved than maybe you normally would. So this could be a pretty good time for, you know, the metal to be hot. My recommendation is that you allow the folks who apply for the planning commission position to indicate their interest for the other positions. And then you take openings for the alternate for the zoning hearing board and for the authority board member and schedule a interview time for all three of those in August so you can make an appointment at your September meeting or your August meeting, whatever would be convenient for the board. That way, you're not reopening the planning commission as a rejection of the candidates you have available right now. Of course, it's up to you guys. You're not, you're not bound to anything. This isn't a regular HR process. You guys get to appoint who you want.
Well, we, we, the authority position isn't a, I mean, it's, we need to fill it, but if we have some time, we can, we can go out and see if anybody's.
Yep.
So, and then we're gonna interview. That's something that we wanna do.
We do need to interview.
So these positions, we can probably go ahead and, and fill tonight with people who are interested because if you have somebody that shows an interest and you don't utilize those people, they're gonna lose interest. So I think we need to, to fill the openings right now. Plus, I think we're in a position that we're dealing with some issues coming up that we should fill.
Your, your talk is only a plan.
Yes.
Well, I would prefer to interview people and I think it's appropriate that we interview across the board, whether the planning commission, zoning hearing board or the township authority.
I don't know if this helps, but I don't know what their preferences are related to zoning hearing board if they're willing to do that. I know one of them said that they would be willing to do the authority position, but I don't know what their preferences are related to the zoning hearing board.
Okay, so let's see. We have two people interested in planning and the planning commission is, they should be in, in that position where you should have it filled, right?
Well, I think one of the two, one of the two that sent the resumes in, I think, is wants some clarification. So.
Okay.
I don't.
Well, we, the other thing we can do is if we bring them in, we might be able to talk to them before one of our hearings.
That's kinda what I was thinking too.
We could back it up with, potentially.
Because I hear you saying too, and some of this stuff, I don't know it's necessary for actually getting a new one, but, but if they got questions and they're not certain about it, you know, I don't wanna force the hand in that.
Well, the other thing is too, I think we should be working with the board authority.
Sure.
As we're, you know, if they're looking for something in particular. as we're, you know, if they're looking for something in particular that's a shortcoming on their board, then I think we need to be looking for that as well. You have taken recommendations from the authority in the past.
And I'm not opposed to possibly having somebody from the authority.
Here for interviews.
Maybe not, you know, they can participate, but, you know, sit in on the internet, do.
My understanding is they're looking for somebody with some finance experience, and, you know, if that's what they need, then that's what they should have. So.
Tom, do you think the basing association will have a hearing for the August meeting? Do you think that they'll delay again?
Will they be coming to the planning commission at August?
I think that there's really no time crunch then, because if they were going to come to the August meeting, I think that that would be the one.
That's what I was thinking, if they're going to be showing up, because then you could have a full, full board to vote.
They just submitted a new plan this morning.
Yes.
Which technically doesn't qualify for the August meeting.
Okay.
Right, settles that. So then when you post the request for resumes for these different positions.
We can do that tomorrow.
Yeah, no, I'm saying do that, start the process.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You just scheduled a little earlier.
So. Do you want to interview for the twenty-fourth and the eighth? Offer people both slots at five-thirty?
On what day?
On the twenty-fourth and the, and the eighth.
August.
Before the zoning, or the conditional use.
That makes it potentially a little longer.
I'm really.
It does, but.
Well, because we're the one else slot for this ordinance too that you're talking about.
Well, I, I think we'll be fine on the ordinance so long as.
No, I'm not worried about the ordinance, but I'm saying adding, stacking this, you know, because we were here at ten forty-five on Tuesday.
And we're just making a twenty-minute interview?
Well, we don't have any.
Well, at this point, we have two.
Well, you're going to post, it could be more.
Well, honestly, I don't think they're going to be able to do it by July, then.
Do what by July?
Interview. Because you probably want to give people a week, two weeks to submit, preferably two.
Yeah, so he's thirteen, so, yeah, probably not.
Okay, so then are we going to run into problems with you guys getting plans and?
No, because this doesn't qualify for the August planning commission, meaning so they're not going to be able to talk about that.
Well, no, no, that's not what I'm referring to. I'm referring to the fact that if we're going into August, you know, that we're going to be able to make a decision, and is our September meeting going to be too late for you? It is something that's been to September.
That should be a problem. We can sit there, talk to people, talk among ourselves, and get some idea, and then let people know.
Okay.
What, what we could also do if we.
Well, depending on how much you've been watching it.
What we could also do is before the August eighth meeting, like we did for that one fee schedule in December, just schedule a fifteen minute beforehand on the eighth, and then you guys can vote.
There we go. That'll work.
Okay.
Okay, so that takes care of that.
So I'll, I'll tell people that they need to submit resumes and interest letters by the twenty.
Well, I'll schedule these two right away, because very happy.
Okay. Well.
Yeah, well, you're going to want to set them up so we don't have them all, but we have three open boards.
Are you saying you want to do this? I'm according to this, like you would know what I mean.
It might partly depend on availability.
Yeah.
So I'll circulate a date to you guys.
Yeah, that's cool.
We got to do it.
Okay, discussion of job descriptions with the new bargaining agreement. There are new positions that are being created that people would be slotted into. These are job descriptions to accompany those designations.
And they're all in agreement with the union and that's kind of jobs.
They don't have a source to agree to the.
But they've seen it.
There's, there were.
Pete?
Yes, sir.
Would you say, I'm, I'm trying to say this in a very AP, AP, non-PC way, or a very PC way, would you say that the union is not concerned with the job descriptions as they have been presented?
Yes.
They're good with it?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and they're a good job description, so. Now, the only thing that may take extended periods of time, we gave six months and two days for them to get their CDLs, that may run into some opposition with PNDOT, just so you're aware of that.
What's the opposition?
Well, they have to go through a special course before they can even take the test.
And we, I thought we talked about that, and we thought that six months was a duration that was long enough to get.
Well, under, under the new federal program, if they've never driven a seat, well, if they don't have CDL license at all right now, so they're going to have to go through that training program. They can take their permit test, but they'll never be able to get a, a road test before taking all those courses. So if you're talking Class A, they've got to take a combination, air brake, and general knowledge. Okay? So they've got to have all those. For Class B, it'll just be air brake and general knowledge. But they've got to, they've got to do the online courses before they can even begin to think about scheduling a written test, because they'll get there to take the road test and they won't be able to.
But go back to that online. What do you mean online? There's a course online that they can take?
Well, yeah, it, the federal government has a requirement now that they attend a training program of some sort if they have no training at all.
Okay.
So, and, and I can get you that information. That's not a problem.
So does that?
It doesn't have anything to do with PNDOT, except for the federal government said that you have to attend these, these courses, or at least take the training, before you can take a road test.
So.
It's called ELDT.
But that doesn't, that costs anything?
Oh, yeah, it does.
I don't think that was there. I don't think that was there.
Okay.
I don't think that was there.
It's entry-level driver training. Just to clarify that. And, and it went into effect in November, not last year, but the year before. And it says, any driver coming in, like if you're a hazard, you can't even take the permit test before you go into that. So, but they'll let you take your permit test, you just can't schedule any road tests. And, and the amount of road tests, depending on whether you're going by class, are going to be more difficult to schedule because all this other stuff's going on.
So I guess my follow-up question to you is, so the six months that we're, we have in there.
Guys, we are right now negotiating in public, so.
Now, we're answering questions about ELDT.
I think if you want to have that conversation, we can go to the back there.
I'm just, I'm just telling you what the ELDT program is. That has nothing to do, I'm not negotiating anything. I'm just telling you we have to, we have to meet.
I think that's above and beyond what our, what we're talking about, with labor.
Well, we are talking about it.
But regardless of.
I know that.
It says in here that.
Without negotiating, that could be something handled on an, an MLOU that you just mentioned, so I'm not worried about it.
Did this come about with the lowering of the drivers?
It didn't come about at all.
Yeah.
Didn't come about at all.
What you just said, is that, that's the same?
Nobody's in that position. Nobody's in that position. We changed the language only to be consistent with the new language in the contract. There wasn't any substance change to what you guys normally prove for.
Or are you just asking about the change in the law?
Yeah.
Change in the law came because there were too many drivers showing up for tasks, and they weren't making it.
Okay.
So now they're saying, you want to be educated before you take your task.
Okay.
It's not just a good old boy club, I'm going to try.
I, I thought it was with the lowering of the Class A license age.
Well, they're doing that as well.
Since they dropped it down to eighteen now.
Yeah, they have, but it's only for certain.
No, not have.
You, you can't cross state lines except with the exception of license. So they haven't proved that all the way across the board yet.
Well, they're not getting anybody eighteen years old to drive anyway.
So they're having a hard time getting anybody to drive, so. Okay, so, I don't know, looking at the, the job description, that's the only thing that I wanted to add to that, but I saw nothing out of place with that. I, I don't know that do we, we don't need to adopt that, do we?
I think it would be better for the board to vote, because you're endorsing them. In theory, I think management can adopt them through me at will. I think it's wiser for the board to retain that for yourselves.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we do that?
Jerry, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I shook my head when David, but I didn't say yes, I'm agreeing with that.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the job descriptions for Labor One, Labor Two, and Labor Three from Maiden Creek Township?
I'll make that motion.
All right.
All in agreement?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approve the memorandum of understanding with the local four twenty-nine for sick time in two thousand twenty-three.
So this is a memorandum of understanding for the remaining, remainder of the current bargaining agreement. It adopts the sick time policy that was already agreed to in the current con, or in the proposed contract. Basically, what this does is it puts more controls around the use of sick time, but also increases the amount of sick time that's available for use.
Okay, so I guess we would want a motion for the manager to sign that?
The board needs to sign that.
The board?
Yep. I have it with me this evening.
Oh, yeah, okay. Then a motion for the, for the memorandum of understanding between Maiden Creek and Teamsters Local Union number four twenty-nine regarding the use of sick time.
All right, seven.
I'll second it.
All in agreement?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I guess we need to look to the agreement.
Yes. Yeah, so we have an agreement. The union has endorsed the agreement. They are waiting on our signatures to put theirs on, next to us. We had a very, I will say animated conversation the very first meeting, and then from there forward, it was smooth sailing.
And I will.
And I use the word animated because it wasn't bad, it was just animated.
And I will say Hunter did a, had a good job pulling us together, and I appreciate the work that we're doing on it, so thank you.
Does it have a motion to approve collective bargaining agreement for two thousand twenty-four through three, two thousand twenty-six?
Seven.
I'll second it.
All in agreement?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Accept the resignation of Jason Peters from the Maiden Creek Township Authority Board.
Seven.
I'll second it.
All in agreement?
Aye.
Aye. We sent him a letter saying thank you for his interest and wishing him the best success moving forward.
We missed one thing, and I should have separated this, this is my mistake, but under approved collective bargaining agreement and memorandum of understanding on slotting.
So they get to bet while they're on duty? They go to the slot?
That's the, that's the, that's the.
Only if the manager gets to go first.
We'll do that on a bet, too. Okay, so for the slotting, as, as the memorandum of understanding for Teamsters Local four twenty-nine and Maiden Creek.
First, the current.
Current, yes. So I have a motion.
Yes, seven.
I'll second it.